Good evening. I'd like to call the regular board meeting of the Waterloo Community Schools Board of Education to order and ask that you join me in a moment of silence. And will you please rise for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and now our mission statement. The Waterloo Schools community commits to a comprehensive system of education and support to assure that each and every student will graduate prepared for college, career, and citizenship, as evidenced by continuing education, pursuing a career path, and contributing to a community. So the first item on our agenda tonight is information from individuals and delegations, and I would ask our board secretary if there are people here this evening who wish to address the board? No?
India's daughter.
Okay. Okay, alright.
In person.
In person, right, right. Well, people were to register, that's why I'm asking, so. It's okay, it's fine. So, you know, I will just ask that, I'm gonna make it real relaxed, because you know how to do this, because your mom's up here, so. You'll have two minutes to speak. I would ask that when you come forward, you state your name and address, and when you're at 30 seconds left in your two minutes, our board secretary will hold up a yellow card, and when your time has expired, she will hold up a red card. And I would ask that you please keep your comments positive in nature, and we are not able to discuss personnel issues, as those are private matters and need to be handled in a different manner than at the public board meeting. And we do not generally do a back-and-forth addressing of issues that are not on our agenda for tonight, but certainly, we welcome you to come forward and state your name and address, and here we go.
Is this thing on?
Yeah, is the little green light on?
Yeah.
Okay.
My name is Eric Johnson, and I live at 116 South Street, and I just want to share my thoughts about the dress code and the hoodies. I want the board to reevaluate the dress code, partly because I think it benefits the boys more than the girls, because I feel like they dress code girls more than boys, because boys wear joggers and not really khaki pants, and they wear hoodies at my school. And I also think they should focus more on wearing masks correctly than hoodies, because I see a lot of kids in the hallways with their masks down, and like, under their noses, but not wearing it correctly. And I just think that doesn't make sense. And I also want to address that when kids get taken out of class, because they're not in dress code, they're missing out on class time, and they could be learning instead of wearing something different to suit the dress code. And I think it's inconsistent to teacher-to-teacher when they dress code kids, because a kid could get dress code throughout the day, and then another kid could just be wearing a hoodie and sweatpants. So I think it's very inconsistent. I think you guys should reevaluate the dress code from time to time, because it's a new generation, it's a new time, and there are different things kids want to wear, so, yeah.
Well said, thank you. Is there anyone else, Madam Secretary, who wishes to address the board this evening? Alright, thank you. Then with that, we'll move on to the next item on our agenda. This is Exhibit A, and this is the public hearing for the 2021-2022 School District Calendar. And with that, I would open the public hearing and ask if there is anyone here this evening who wishes to address the board regarding the public hearing on the School District Calendar.
And we wait until later to ask our questions?
Yep, yep, we'll discuss it when we get to it in our action items. This is just for the public, and no one sent any, we had no submissions, okay, great. Then with that, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Thank you, Stacy, and a second from India?
Yes.
Excellent. Alright, and all those in favor then of closing the public hearing, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye, motion carried. That takes us then to Item B, which is the public hearing on the Central Middle School remodel and the Waterloo Career Center expansion. And I would declare that motion, or I'm sorry, that hearing open, that public hearing open, and ask once again if there's anyone here this evening who wishes to address the board, and Madam Secretary, if there was anyone who sent comments regarding this public hearing? No? Okay. And again, we'll discuss this when we get down to Item J on our agenda tonight, so. Is there, with that, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing. Thank you, Sue, and a second, Aster. And all those in favor of closing the public hearing for the remodel and the Career Center expansion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye, motion carried. Then the next item on our agenda, we've even got mascots here tonight, people, I'm super excited, is a board celebration for Expo Alternative Learning Center as becoming a Leader in Me lighthouse school. And this is Exhibit C, it's on page five. And this is just for information only, but I'm excited to welcome Principal Whelan to the end. Yay! And like I said, I think we've got some mascots in the house tonight, so I'm gonna turn it over to you.
We're so excited being here, so. We got one of our students here, his name's Shane Edwards, he's gonna introduce everybody, so go ahead, Shane.
Hello, my name is... Hello, my name is Shane Edwards, I'm an Expo ALC student. This is Mr. Whelan, he's the principal here at Expo. This is Mr. Shepherd, Assistant Principal. This is Eddie the Eagle, and this is Terry Trask, we're glad to be here today.
So again, we're here just to announce that we have something special. We are a lighthouse school, we've been identified by Franklin Covey. We're so excited for this honor, I mean, we've been working on this for seven years.
Wow.
So, it's... It's a huge task and undertaking, and I will tell you, the first three years, we spent just on staff, and so just developing our own personal, private victories, and then moving to public victories, and instilling the skills that our students needed for the last four years. So I'm not gonna hog all this, and I know that you guys probably have some questions, but any one of you guys want to be able to say something real quick before we get into questions?
Um, we're a lighthouse school.
Alright, there we go, we're a lighthouse school. So, before we go any further too, we have another announcement. Last Friday, I don't know if you guys know, but we have the top recognition within the state for PBIS now as well. So we have been named a model school by the state, so, another huge celebration. It's just one thing after another, I think, here, so.
He volunteered for that.
So do you guys have any questions for us?
Well, tell the public what that means. What does a lighthouse school mean? I don't think a lot of people understand what that means.
I'm gonna let Henry Shepherd jump in, because I know he loves to talk, so.
Love it.
Like Mr. Whelan said, we've been on this lighthouse journey for many, many years. But really, this last two years, even last year with everything that was happening with COVID and working from home and the virtual shutdown, we were still hard at it. And I can't say enough thanks to Terry Trask, walking beside us, holding our hands. We've shed some tears over the last couple of years about our evidence binder, maybe some angry words back and forth, no. But, in all honesty, that binder really embodied everything that we've done with the Leader in Me journey for the last seven years. So, in a typical year, people from Franklin Covey would come and do an actual visit to your school. Well, they couldn't do that this year, of course, because of COVID mandates, so we did two virtual evaluations this year. We did a practice one before the holiday break with some people from Leader Valley and some people connected with Franklin Covey out east, just to prepare us and our students for what to expect with a virtual lighthouse evaluation. And then we did the actual evaluation in January. Terry and the people that are connected with us, Melissa Reed couldn't have anything to do with it, just to keep it all fair and unbiased. So the people that did our evaluation were individuals connected with Franklin Covey, but from around the country. And we were really worried that not being in our building, not getting to sit and visit with our students, I know Dr. Lindeman has been in our building a number of times and had lunch with our kiddos, and a lot of those kiddos are individuals on our lighthouse team, and you get that feeling from them about what this is all about, and their pride really comes through. We were worried that they wouldn't pick up on that, but boy, that came through loud and clear. So that evaluation, they told us, the people who did the evaluation for us, they do the report, they turned it into Shaun Covey. They said that would take four to six weeks to hear, and within two weeks, we got our response, and they said, I think, Terry even said that's the quickest turnaround that we've had. So, to us, to our students, being a lighthouse student just means that, or being a lighthouse school means that we can shine our light for others to see and let them really see what Expo's all about. Tara was at our building last week and interviewed some of our lighthouse students, and they said just that, that our kids have been on this mission to kind of change the perception of Expo Alternative Learning Center, and who are the kids who attend there, and why do they go there? And they want people to know that we've got some awesome kids there, and I believe that with my whole heart, and I couldn't be more proud of these kids, and more proud of Shane and his fellow lighthouse student members. And I think this gives us that opportunity and that platform to do some of these things, so I'm very, very thankful.
I would like Terry Trask to be able to come up, she's actually retiring this year from the Leader Valley. And just to give her a round of applause, because she's been so critical and pivotal to what the work has been here in the Waterloo Community School District, and I'm sure she's got a couple of things to be able to say on behalf of Expo. So Terry, can you come on up and get your applause?
So seriously, these guys have been just a joy to work with. I always say, these are my people. And I cannot tell you, when you look at the implementation matrix for Leader in Me, the three columns are leadership, culture, and academics. And it's not, if you're doing okay in one, but not in the other, it is really the full implementation of leadership, culture, academics. It needs to look different, it needs to sound different, and it needs to feel different. And from the very first time I walked into Expo, I knew that the heart was there, we just need to get some systems around that to make sure that the work was sustainable, and it has to start with the kids, so. I know Shane wasn't a part of the first group, but the first group we had came in, kind of like, yeah, right. And once they embraced the idea that change starts with me, and that paradigm that if they wanted their story to be different, they needed to write that story, because they're the authors of that story. And to watch that power grow as the day went on, and to do the whiparound at the end of, what did you get out of today? And every single one of them unanimously said that we can do this, we can do this, and it starts with us. And that is where the Eagle mascot was born, hence I have my swag. So, I might be retiring, recalibrating, but I will not be giving up my swag, so. Super proud of them, Franklin Covey the whole way was, even, they wrote a high school rubric because of schools like Expo.
Nice.
And they would have been it a year ago, had it not been for everything that rolled out, but they stayed the course, and that evidence binder was a labor of love, and the kids say the whole thing, so. Anyway, I just couldn't be prouder of them, and super excited, so, thank you.
Thank you. And just for an impact, we already have four interviews from schools from outside the state that actually have already scheduled appointments with us, so we're gonna be doing those over the next week through virtual and phone conference. They're reaching out to us as other teams, other schools who are a beacon to us, we're gonna be a beacon for other schools across the United States, so. I mean, it's such a great time, and I think we say it over and over, it's a great time to be Expo, and it's a great time to be an Eagle, so.
Yes.
So it's awesome, it's very awesome.
I have a couple of questions for Shane, if you wouldn't mind. Okay, Shane, tell me how your school looks different, and tell me kind of about the committee that you have, your lighthouse committee, and kind of what things you do, and how you impact fellow students.
Our lighthouse student council team is more, I mean, student team, sorry, is like a family, it's like a family. We all work together to fix problems inside our school. We wanna like, let's for instance, next Thursday, no, yeah, this Thursday, we're going to hopefully get out and pick up trash around our school, because of the trash that's around our school, wanna pick it up, make it more cleaner. We have a meeting every Thursday, and anybody's welcome to join that wants to become a lighthouse, and they really help students because they're the leaders of the school. Like, they wanna help, everyone's a leader of the school, but they all want to help everybody become a better version of themselves.
Nice.
Yes, um, yes. So, my action team, so different actions, attendance, we have an attendance keeper as one action team. So, it's not really action, it's just a job. We have different jobs for each person, since that's the lighthouse team. So, attendance maker, attendance, I'm the timekeeper, but jobs, like, you know, stuff that we did. I know that Antavis could probably speak more on this, but he is not here today because he has a job, but he definitely did a lot of stuff, but, um, one job that I did was, um, I don't really know, because I wasn't really here, I've only been here for like, one year. And we've done a lot of stuff inside the school instead of like, outside the school, because of COVID, we haven't really been able to get outside the school, but yeah. Oh, definitely, oh, I forgot about that, okay. So about a year ago, we started talking about how to, we wanted a mascot, and with that mascot, we needed to change our name. So, our thing used to be just a boring picture of a person, you know, just a boring picture, and we changed it to Expo Eagles within a span of a year, and we took it to our Oasis classes, so we brought out like, six names. Then we had all of our students out of every Oasis class vote on a name for the mascot. And then we found out Eddie the Eagle, and then also, we had, we needed like, Eagles, we needed a new mascot, so we got him. They voted on that, like, all as a school, like, everybody's school, so I'm really nervous right now. I'm sorry, but yeah, so yeah, we voted all as a school, every student got the vote, and yeah, because we had different Oasis classes, there's like, six of them, so yeah.
So we really stepped up with our students, and we really focused on, there's seven habits for highly effective teens, and nobody knows really about the eighth habit, and it's finding your voice. And so really, we have focused over the last couple of years on our students finding their voice. And so when the students came forward, you know, I mean, they just didn't connect with something that came out of the 1970s with the three faces of Expo. So I know it was out of an art project, and we were appreciative of the history, and we have it up still all over our walls. We celebrate the history of Expo, but we wanted something new and refreshed, and our students are the ones that brought it forward. They actually came to the adult leadership team, and they presented to us and said, hey, we want to do something new. And so this is what came out of it, was Expo the Eagle, but also we rebranded ourselves. If you drive past our school now, we have a beautiful sign out there with our new logo, and it looks clean, looks sharp. Our kids look clean, our kids look sharp. I'll tell you, just based on some data, seven years ago, our culture and climate survey was at 45%. Last week, when we got our culture and climate survey back, it was 96%. And so, that leads into student investment as well as staff investment. So, the staff are invested, our, some more data, I know Dr. Lindeman loves data, so. So just some more data that goes along with it, and showing that our students are leaders, we've reduced our suspension rates by over 90% in seven years. So, also with major referrals, we've reduced those by 85%. And then when it comes to academics, because that social, emotional, and that culture and climate is one thing, but it leads to academic achievement and performance. We've actually, our credit accrual is over 125% increase over the last couple of years. So, that leads to graduates, and so, last year, we graduated 155 students. So, I think that's huge, that's really huge.
So, as Kiri is sharing this, one of the things that Franklin Covey is really strict on are... Oh, I'm sorry, one of the things that Franklin Covey is really strict on are the results. What are the results that you're getting? Not, what are you doing, but what are you getting because that's what you're doing? And so when Expo started with their State of the Union, because you can't argue with your own data, right? And they said, this is what's happening, this is our before, this is our after, and is it the only piece of the equation? No. But is it a big part of the equation? Yes. And when you think about what you're getting and what you're doing, it really starts with how you see things. And we always tell people the paradigms, right, how we see things. And Expo truly to look this way, and we physically have them do this, we say, switch it up. No, this is the correct paradigm, right? And the paradigm isn't that leadership is for the few, it's that all kids can be leaders. And it's not that some of them have gifts and talents, they all have gifts and talents. And what the risk is, is that we don't figure out what those are. So they get a chance to have a job, to serve, to have the voice. So, this eagle, I mean, it might be, hey, it's a mascot and a fresh look, but to have the gift to be there the day that they said, hey, what would you change if you could? And they said, we want something that binds us together, to belong. And I'm like, what? And they said, well, East has this, and West has this, but we have these three faces. Say more about that. And as they were talking, again, they had no identification with that, but they immediately, I said, well, if it could be anything, what would it be? And they said, an eagle. I said, well, why an eagle? They said, because it stands for freedom, and that we can fly when we come here. And this is not a place where it's the end of the road, it's where you get to come and turn yourself around and be family. And they had done their homework about how eagles fly, and how they stick together, and that they're leaders, and there's so much more to it. So, seeing this is just like the icing on the cake of that conversation.
I just want to like, tell you a story, not really a story, but like, something that happened to me. So, I did about a semester at East. In middle school, I was always getting into fights, you know, not, you know, doing what a kid is supposed to do in middle school. Went to a semester at East, got suspended three times within the span of three weeks. One of them was a fight, my GPA was horrible, absolutely horrible. Then I, my mom said, I was scared to go to Expo at first, because of all the bad stories and stuff that everybody's talking about, you know. But my mom said, you know, what if we change it to Expo? And I was like, we could try it, right? Then I went there, the environment was like, they brought me into this family. All the teachers were, brought me in like, I was theirs, you know. And then I brought my GPA from about a 1.5 all the way to like, almost a 3.0. So like, that's what really helped me with that, Expo like, helped me very much for that. And they brought me in like, I was family, you know, like, they've known me forever, but, you know, like, they really helped me to become the best me I could be.
Wonderful, wonderful.
And I think that's where we're at, Expo is a family, and we're part of the Waterloo Community School District, and we're blessed, so, thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you all for sharing this with us, and I promise you that as soon as we get to a point when we can be a little closer together, we have big celebrations planned at the building, I promise.
And Shane, I just want to commend you, you did an awesome job.
Yes.
And just your comment of saying that you were in middle school and that you were doing things that you shouldn't be doing, and to recognize and to publicly say that you did that, and then to double your grade point. Man, if I was your mom, I'd be like, woo-hoo, I mean, I'm not your mom, but you are awesome, just great job.
Super proud of you.
Growing up, I graduated from West in 92, and so Expo, and then I ended up working for state treatment, and so we had kids at Expo. And throughout that time, Expo was the scary place, right? That you went, it was your last resort. Well, as in, just a couple of years ago, one of my friends said, my daughter has a lot of anxiety, so we're gonna have her go to Expo. Now it's something people want to do, because it's a completely, it's not a less than, it's different. So it provides the environment where you're gonna get the same education, you're gonna get the same family, so. Not just as a school member, but as a citizen of Waterloo, thank you for making that happen.
Thank you. And I was just gonna comment, it's not only a great turnaround story, but it's just plain positivity. Expo is now the poster child for positivity, and I saw that in the videos and the other information that was shared, you know. The students are just excited for the future, they're looking forward to the future, they can learn. So we live in a world where there's, you know, as much negativity as you can, as you want to find. But there's also the other side of it, and sometimes it takes a little extra effort to realize that the future is what you make of it, and you can't change the past, but you certainly can change the future. And so, to me, it's called finding your voice. The voice I'm hearing is one of just tremendous positivity and tremendous turnaround, so. Appreciate everything you've brought up.
And the big thing is, we don't restrict our kids, we have 10 different programs within our building, we have discipline, behavior, educational, and we don't restrict anybody from being a leader within our building. When we do PBIS assemblies, when we do everything together, when we're able to open it back up, all of our students are able to participate within that. We have people that sit on our lighthouse team, which is our leadership team, all of them are leaders, but we have another Lex level of leadership. And I will tell you, it doesn't matter which program that these students are in, or which program that they're coming from, they all have the strength to be leaders, and that's what we're proud of. We're pulling the best out of kids, and they're starting to understand that they have self-regulation, self-responsibility, and they're accountable for themselves now. We do a thing that's called personal bank accounts, and every student reflects, their picture is on it electronically, so they reflect with their data. A lot of things is, we are getting kids that are coming into us that are very deficient. They might be three years into high school, and they still think that they're a junior, and that they're socially promoted. And the thing is, they understand when they come to us right away what their pathway is and what they need to do to accomplish that success.
And those skills are the ones that, you know, they may not be tested, but they're the ones that exist in the real world. And that's the way the world works, so the experience of your students is really gonna benefit them in the future, so again, I commend you all.
Thank you for coming, appreciate it.
Congratulations.
I have one last thing to leave you with, because I gotta do the infomercial for Leader in Me, you guys, seriously. He said that they worked with staff for three years, I mean, I would love to see this blessing for all schools in Waterloo. I know Jane has been a big supporter of that, so thank you. But to see what it does for staff is incredible as well, that power of empowerment. And when you said that about the future, to have these kids realize that they have one, was huge, no matter what their age. But to have them be that far and think that, not be able to see past tomorrow, and then to know, not only is there a tomorrow, but I have some choice in how that plays out, is awesome. So, two of my favorite Covey quotes, one is, you believe in people so clearly that they believe it in themselves, which is what you just witnessed with Shane. And the other one is staff and students, right? That we come together, we want to be, everybody, we want to be a valued member of a winning team, doing meaningful work, and an environment of trust, whether that's our home, our church, or our school. And to have that foundation, to be able to use that matrix implementation in leadership, culture, and academics to guide your work in that, to get results, and not being either, we have to be either-or, PBIS or Leader in Me, but those two things marry so nicely. So, I'd love to come back in a few years and see every school is a lighthouse school in Waterloo, because I do believe in it that clearly. So, thank you for your support, and just kudos to Expo there.
Yeah, thank you, guys. Thanks for coming, Eddie. Tara, do you need to get a picture with all them?
Oh, yes, Melissa will not be happy if we don't.
I was just gonna say, grab a picture wherever you need to, so, yeah. No, thank you, but I think we're good.
Eddie the Eagle sweating it out.
Yeah, we'll be sitting here.
And while they're doing that, just, I didn't really make any comments, but I just wouldn't want them to get away without me making a couple of comments. But, you know, really, kudos to Kiri and Henry for driving the bus on this. You know, Kiri's vision for really changing the culture at Expo and truly making it an alternative instead of less than. So, I mean, that was huge, and I know Henry has been a constant champion, and Terry, with your retirement, let us say thank you to all that you have done. You know, Terry used to be a Waterloo school staff, and then she switched to a new job where she could still support Waterloo schools, and so we're grateful for that. Shane, just a word to you, I think you did an amazing job, and the best part is, you represent a lot of other kids who could have stood there as well, because you guys have really, it's not just a, it's just not a one-off. He really represents a lot of kids at Expo who have a turnaround story and how they have been part of that process. And to Eddie, who was so patient in that hot uniform, way to go, alright, thank you, guys, congratulations.
Thank you.
If any of you want to see our electronic lighthouse binder that we shared with Covey Foundation, we'll share it.
Okay.
It's like 166 pages, but it's good to read.
Right, perfect. Thank you all. Woo, that sets me up for the rest of the night. Lyle, I like, I know. Lyle, I like your words about positivity.
Yeah, that just came through along, loud and clear to me.
Absolutely. All right, well, moving on then, the next item on our agenda is our consent agenda, which this evening consists of four items. The minutes of the February 22nd, 2021 regular board meeting, which is item D. Personnel appointments and adjustments, item E. Bills due and payable and bills paid between board meetings, item F. And the labor negotiations team, which is item G. And I would entertain a motion to place those items on the table. Thank you, Jessie, and a second.
Second.
Thank you, Aster. And are there any items that board members wish to have removed?
F and G, please.
F as in Frank and G as in George. Okay. Then all those in favor of approving items D and E, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And all those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye, motion carried. That takes us then to item F, which is bills due and payable. And the recommended motion is that the Board of Education approve the bills due and payable and the bills paid between board meetings.
Some more.
Thank you, Jessie, and a second.
Second.
Thank you, India, and discussion.
I just had one question. With Iowa testing programs, the $29,288, is that for which program?
Michael, did you hear that? It's actually for the testing service, but I don't actually know. Would that be for Iowa testing programs? We get all of our testing through them, but I don't think we would have prepaid. We didn't pay anything last year because of the testing. Stephanie, any, I don't know.
It's just 3-2, it's just dated, so it's real recent.
Yeah. Michael, do you have any information on that?
What is the vendor name?
Iowa Testing Programs.
Yeah, Iowa Testing Programs.
It's vendor 1210, invoice 32 of 21, $29,288.
What page is that on?
15.
Page 15.
Well, I've got the detail file. I can look and see if that, if I can get any more information, but you can go on to other things, but.
Okay. Maybe during your financial piece, if you find it, you can let us know. And if not, you can just email the board and let us know.
Yeah, that's a good thing.
Super. All right, Stacy, we'll get that, I promise. All right, anything further then on bills?
Yeah, I'll be abstaining from this vote as well.
Yep, gotcha. All right, so then all those in favor of approving item F, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And all those opposed, same sign. And any abstentions?
Aye.
And chair votes aye, motion carried. Six ayes and one abstention. Thank you, Pam. Sorry, Secretary Arndorfer, thank you. All right, the next item on our agenda then is the item G, which is the labor negotiations. And this is on page 20. And that recommended motion is the Board of Education approve the labor negotiations team and process as outlined.
Some more.
India and Sue, I'm going to go with first and second. And with that discussion, Stacy, I think you pulled this.
Yeah, I just had a question. So where principals are from, so everyone knows which three schools we have principals.
Uh huh. Sheena?
I'm sorry, I had a question piggybacking on that. I wondered why there was no elementary presence. No, we do, we have one of each. Okay, got it. I was thinking it was two middle schools. No, okay.
So Sheena is from Carver Academy, Neldrika Whitaker is from Cunningham, and Andrew Meehee is the principal at West High. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to answer that for you.
I got a couple of other things I need some help with as well. No, that was a joke.
So we have both, I mean, we have all three. We have high school, middle school, and elementary represented.
And how are they chosen?
By me. I think, you know, last year, no, two years ago, we had a, we had a different team. And this year, I just wanted to shake things up just a little bit. I looked at the diversity of our last committee as well and wanted to make some changes. And also just the performance of our principals. I think we got some outstanding people in that group. But I also wanted that representation, so that's why you saw representative at each level as well.
That's what I was just going to thank you on was the equity piece that represents everybody.
Just remind me, sorry, last year there were teachers on there, right? Or they're always principals, just principals?
Just principals, because it was last year, it was two years ago, because we're negotiating with them.
The teachers would be represented by the WEA. So this is the district, so this group represents the board. So they bargain on behalf of you. And then the teachers would have their group that would bargain on behalf of the WEA.
Thank you.
So the whole group does include teachers, but. Yeah, but just not on this group.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, anything further then on item G? Then all those in favor of approving the labor negotiations team, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye, motion carried. The next item on our agenda then is item H, and this is on page 21. And this is our elementary math curriculum adoption. And the recommended motion here is that the Board of Education approve the elementary math curriculum adoption for the 2021-2022 school year at a cost of $432,572.50 as outlined.
Some more.
And a second?
Second, India.
Thank you, India, and discussion. I know that the board has, Mr. Christopher, I appreciate the fact that you put together a Google Doc with our, you know, all of our questions so that we could all see those. I actually wanted to start, I had one quick question. The motion says that the adoption is for the 2021-2022 school year, but we will be using this adoption for more than just one year. I know. So I just want to clarify that for our public, that we're not, we're not changing curriculums for one year.
Correct, yep.
Right.
That's when the adoption date would take.
Yes, take effect.
Take effect.
Yep, I just wanted to clarify that because someone asked me and I want to make sure, so.
And with me, some of the math committee that was part of the adoption are with me. So Stacy Childs and then Bethany Panther. And then Jen Hartman was also part of the team.
And your awesome videos that you guys did for us, those were great.
Well, we told them that they couldn't all come and so they were disappointed. They wanted to make sure that you guys kind of saw some of their work.
They wanted to be on camera again, right? Just what you guys wanted is to be back up here, so. All right, board, I'll open it up.
I was just going to ask if you would go over the Google Doc. Since it was questions we have, it's probably ones that people at home do as well.
Sure. Okay, so first one was, unless you guys want to do this, you guys want me to do this? Okay. So who else is using Bridges? So first thing we did was we checked with all the other UNEA districts to see what they were using. And we found Dubuque and Council Bluffs are also using Bridges. We looked at four other, or four total resources. But this is the one that kind of, through the committee, is the one that shook out as the best for us. Mason City is also using it, who is part of our Central Rivers AEA. And they're in year one of implementation. So it's kind of nice because then we can work with some of the folks at AEA who are working with Mason City to work through our implementation. Next question was, when was the last math curriculum adoption? And our current resource investigation was adopted in 2010, 2011. Next question was, does the number corner? So number corner is one of the components of Bridges. Bridges has several components. Number corner, it has an assessment guide and then also just the teacher resources along with all the student resources. But number corner is one of the pieces. And the question was, does number corner include math facts and time sheets? So the math facts are taught and they are practiced through number corner, but none of it is timed. We would be working through strategies. So students would learn strategies so that with those strategies, if they come to a fact that they forget, because we all forget things. So say they come to like eight plus seven and they forget it. They'd have that strategy of using doubles plus one, so they could do seven plus seven is 14 plus one more is 15. So that would provide them with a backup instead of the only other option is counting on their fingers. Next question was, is it a significant shift from our current curriculum? So it's a shift in some minor ways. So like the structure of the lessons are very similar. It starts with a teacher-led launch. Then it goes to more of student work time. And then it follows up with a discussion. So that's very similar to what our current structure is. In other ways, it's very different. So investigations is mostly inquiry model, which is where a teacher poses a question, students kind of work through it. And then the teacher kind of guides the discussion from there. Where this, where Bridges is more blended, so there's more direct instruction, which is teacher-directed. There is still some investigation, which is student-centered, and then some open exploration. Another big change is the alignment to the Iowa Core. So with Bridges, 70% of your time is spent on priority standards, where currently investigations was created before the Iowa Core and it's not perfectly aligned. So they did add some additional pieces that would help it to align, but they were added after the fact, so it doesn't work quite as well as what Bridges is because it was created after the core and it's definitely aligned. Let's see. Bridges also has an assessment component that includes a comprehensive growth guide, so it'll measure students' growth across the entire year, along with end-of-unit assessments. And then basic facts are taught through strategies for mastery. Bridges has, it has extensive virtual resources, so it has virtual manipulatives, which are really important to us, especially right now. And then they're also used for those visual models that are created through each of the steps along the way because that helps students as they create that mental model in their minds so they can kind of build off of that. Another question was, due to COVID, the data provided by Jane shows our students have experienced a significant loss in proficiency this year, not just in math. How do we think the new curriculum is going to address these gaps? So it's going to close gaps in several ways. We plan to implement weekly math PDs connected to that next week's teaching and learning. So to increase teachers' content knowledge, that'll happen during the school day, during their PLC time, which is currently used as planning time. We're going to use some of that for kind of preparing them for those upcoming lessons so that they understand the strategies that students will be taught. That way, we just build their content knowledge to make them better at teaching math. The number corner distributes practice of key skills throughout the year. So instead of just having one unit on a scale, it's spread throughout the year. So it's continued practice, it spirals. The assessment component will provide us with actionable data to better support students. Investigation was published prior to the math standards. Currently, investigation is being, is, oh, sorry. So then what happens is a lot of the standards that are being taught, teachers have to supplement with other resources that they have to find themselves or create because it wasn't fully aligned with the core. And then teachers will have digital access to all grade-level content and strategies, which will be very nice, especially with what we're seeing now with gaps because the third-grade teacher will have the second-grade resources so they can see how the strategies were taught in second grade and also the fourth grade so they can push students to that next level. Digital access and components will allow teachers to provide more timely, meaningful feedback. So instead of having to collect all the workbooks from students, they'll have it digitally so that they can maybe do a quick screen castify and send information to students, jump onto that document and type in some feedback. So there's lots of different ways they can do that. And then we had a question that says, "What challenges do you foresee for students, staff, and parents in adopting to the changes?" So for students getting used to the routines of Bridges, because all curriculums are set up thinking that students have had it from kindergarten through fifth grade. So making sure that we look back at the previous year's learning, what strategies students were supposed to have learned that previous year and not just look at it and assume that students would know that. We're going to have to be very intentional with our planning. That's part of what we'll be doing during that PD time is to make sure we prepare teachers for that. Changes for staff, becoming accustomed to multiple components of the new resource. So the new resource does have multiple pieces to it. We'll address that through overview PD at the beginning of the school year and then ongoing weekly PDs. Bridges also has a number of virtual manipulatives that teachers will use as they help students to kind of build those visual models. We have used these, this part of the program is a free resource. And prior to us doing the adoption, we saw the need for that virtual manipulative because in class currently with COVID, we couldn't have the manipulatives out. So the virtual manipulatives kind of filled that gap, that and also for our virtual students. And then challenges for parents. So this curriculum teaches conceptual understanding first through visuals and manipulatives, then moves to the procedural math. Most parents learn procedural math only and kind of question that need for that conceptual understanding. Bridges has parent letters that explain that piece to parents and then kind of help them through that conceptual learning piece. So, and then we did get another question that I did not add to this. So I had another question that said, "Are we going to do time tests?" And also, are the facts still taught? So the facts are taught, but they are talked through strategies. Like I talked about earlier, we want to make sure students have those strategies so that they can, it not only helps them to know their facts, but it also helps to build that number sense that we want to make sure they have. We still have that same end goal of having them be able to identify their facts within three seconds. It's just not assessed with that one time test. It's assessed through, you know, independent work during the days, assessment pieces. So as you guys look at the materials, the assessment pieces have fact fluency pieces on there. And then when we have a student that might need some additional support there, we're talking about using running records. And I'll let Bethany talk a little bit more about that if you have questions on that. But that's, it's going to take a little bit more time for that. It's individual, but it really lets you get to know the student and kind of where they're at as far as their fact fluency and what strategies they're using if they are using a strategy. So that's, takes me through the entire Google Doc. So what additional questions do you guys have for us?
Well, mine was more in the process as far as I saw that you reviewed four. So I just wondered as far as what made this program stand out between the other three? And then cost-wise, I mean, I know we don't choose for cost, we choose for content. But, you know, is it a comparable cost for the other programs? So kind of that processes. And then also, just wondering, it said you had a teacher from each of your 11 schools on the committee. And so did they get feedback from teachers in their building? And did you address like negative feedback if there was some? Or how did you address at the building level, bringing it back to your committee level? Thank you.
I can start with the cost piece and I'll let you guys take some of the other ones. So the cost, as far as what we looked at, so we started with Bridges and Vision, IM, and then, Go Math, thank you. And as far as cost, Bridges and IM were probably the least expensive. And those were the two that we ended up. IM is an open source, so you just pay pretty much for the printing resources. The only problem with that is it's still in the beta form, so it's not 100% ready. They were telling us about pieces that were still coming and still being developed. That kind of made the committee nervous. So I'll let you guys answer some of the other questions.
So about the feedback from other staff, once we had narrowed it down to the two choices, Ryan brought in representatives virtually that were able to tell us about their program. So all teachers had access to that. And then were able to kind of give their feedback to their representatives within the building. So that was really, really powerful. And then once we moved towards Bridges, they were able to go back and watch those videos again. So they have a little bit of background knowledge on what's coming. Do you want to talk about kind of what sold it for you?
Sure. So I'm Stacy Childs, I teach third grade at Kitterell. For those of you who don't know me, which is none of you, so hello, everyone. So I kick, this is my first year in Waterloo, so welcome, welcome to all of you. Thank you for welcoming me as well. So what really sold me on Bridges is honestly that it's a really robust curriculum. I feel like sometimes curriculums can go a mile wide and an inch deep. And this is one that really takes those standards and digs deeply into each one of them. And we do it multiple, multiple, multiple times a year. It isn't something where in the beginning of the third-grade year, I'm going to review addition and subtraction and then that's a second grade and a beginning third-grade standard, we're not going to touch it again. We touch it over and over and over again. And so kids are given many, many opportunities to be. And so kids are given many, many opportunities to become proficient. Because that's really the goal, is that thinking of a grade level as a continuum. We don't need them to be proficient in, in October or even November. But we do need to build that proficiency, once we get to May. They're never going to be able to do that unless that we give them multiple opportunities. And that's something that really sold me on Bridges. I think too, the big piece for me was this whole number corner. Thinking about, you know, this, again, I can speak as a third grade teacher. That thinking about the, the amount of number sense students come to us with and leave us with is really crucial for building on later um, big mathematical brains. I want kids to have math be their favorite part of the day. I want them to love math to we, to be honest, the way their parents don't necessarily love math. Because the way we were taught math was not always as fun. I want math, and that's what Bridges really brings, is that number corner, that number sense, thinking about numbers fluently, flexibly, thinking about being efficient and really finding that joy in discussing what do numbers mean? And how, what, what do they mean for us and what can they do for us? So I'm really excited about having the opportunity to have a really robust curriculum that dives deep, that our students get to do that diving as well. It's not just teacher diving.
Um, to kind of piggyback off of that, so I'm a district math coach, so I kind of get to work with a lot of teachers. And as we're digging deeper, we also know we're coming with kids who do have some gaps. And one thing that Bridges has is an intervention guide. So it kind of has that if then, which as a coach, that's kind of the piece that our teachers really can use. Is I know my kids are missing this, but what do I do now? And so that piece is already built in, so yeah.
When you say that coach part, is it coach for parents or the coach for you teaching the student?
For my role?
When you were saying the co-
Sorry, I um, am a coach for the teachers.
When you were saying that you have um, techniques that you can use for coaching, is it for the student or for the parent? For the student to understand?
Right, so sorry, I think maybe I misspoke on that. Um, in my role as a coach, I think that's one of the pieces that was missing, was that intervention. Like how do we, how do we help kids who are struggling a bit? So yeah.
So it's for teachers, I think that because it helps hurt, if a student is struggling, a teacher might say, I don't know how to help this. Or what, what material should I use, what strategies? So they can use those materials with the teacher, so the teacher can support the kid with perfect, you know, right there strategies. Right?
Yep.
And I um, one of them asked about, no curriculum is perfect. So what did you not like about this that we'll have to watch for?
Right.
What, was there something in the strategy like, well, that's, it's better than, I mean, obviously you brought us the best pick, which is exactly what you should do. What are some things that you're thinking, that's something we're gonna watch for or we'll have to provide additional PD? Is there anything?
Sure, well, I think probably the hardest thing about curriculum rollout is ensuring fidelity, that we teach it the way it's meant to be taught. And that's hard for teachers, you know, we, we do have a very full and overflowing plate most of the time. And so I think um, the thing that's really going to help us the most is, is this weekly PD. That there are a lot of components that we're just not familiar with, with Bridges. You know, we're, the, the, the teachers who've been here for a long time are very accustomed to the way things, you know, have been with Investigations for a long time. So I think really ensuring that teachers have that support. We really understand, what does number corner supposed to look like? What does it look like at its best in kindergarten, in third grade, in fifth grade? Um, what does that teacher-led discussion look like? What does that student work supposed to look like? So really having that to, that support to really understand what all of these components look like. Um, a, a piece I really enjoy is that it, it offers us the opportunity to have pre-assessments as well as post-assessments. And pre-assessments really drive our instruction and that's a piece that we're lacking right now. So for example, if I give a pre-assessment to a unit that I'm going to teach, and I understand that five of my students are already proficient, I can take that data and really adjust my instruction. But that's going to take some time and some, some help from our coaches, Bethany's not my coach, but, but from my coach as well as my team members. And so I think really having that weekly opportunity to um, to work together with my grade level team and with the, with my coach as well is really going to be important for all staff members.
Yeah, I have a, just a few notes. Um, so when you were talking to the other stu- schools and they had implemented like Dubuque, how long did it take to get out that uncomfortable stage for teachers? Um, because you know, there's going to be this trial and error, but how long did they feel like, okay, they finally got it? Because I'm asking this, as we just witnessed COVID for parents at home. And they're like, oh, I don't know what you're doing, I'm going back to the procedural and I'm glad that you addressed that. But as we're teaching our students and you know, the, as much as parents did not want to do it, they did not understand what they were doing, so they went to what they knew, what they would conceptu- you know, what they grew up with. So just tell me, you know, you know, how they had implemented this and they got out of uncomfortable stage.
So with Dubuque, they told me it took about a year, a year and a half before the teachers were really, really comfortable with it. Um, they did a PD at the beginning of the year that I think, I don't have my notes in front of me, but I think they said three days. Council Bluffs, I did not hear, I did not hear from them. Um, Mason City is currently implementing. And they said that the teachers are really comfortable with the number corner and the routines at this point. It's just that they haven't taught through the entire thing. So they're, you're, you're kind of learning as you go until you've done it a couple of times. So that's, that's the challenging thing right now with Mason City. So they're, they're feeling pretty good about it and they are face to face for some of their students. So they did send us some videos of what it looks like with students. So we were able to see that and yeah, I, the nice thing is we're gonna be able to work with some of the coaches, because our AEA coaches, we share, so we can work with some of the coaches and kind of walk through some of those pieces with them. I did ask them when we talked, would you do anything different with your implementation if you had to do it over again? And they said there's really nothing they would do different, so they would, they would roll it out the exact same way. Because that was something we really wanted to know. But with all of the components, we feel like having that weekly time, especially not only getting the, the PD from coaches, but also having the time to talk with other teachers at their same grade level. Because that is one of the benefits that we've got through this, this COVID nightmare that we're in. It's now, we're really comfortable with the virtual learning that's ha- or virtual getting on a, a Google meets with all the buildings at the same time. So the teachers will be able to do that at each grade level and have that other person that's, that's going through it similarly to them at another building.
How long was the process from start till now? Um, to come up with this adoption?
So started in August, doing the research as far as what the UNs were using. And then in October, we started to put the committee together and got the physical resources in and then started going through the process. Um, we narrowed it down to two in January, or was it the end of December, January? In January, and that's when the companies came in and shared, shared the um, presentation with us. And at the presentation point, we invited all staff. So all staff in the district was invited to that. I think one might've had fifty-six and the other one was right around fifty teachers attend. And that was all virtual.
I, I will say my, you know, my reviewing of it, I, I appreciate it having a virtual learning piece to that in terms of visual. I say virtual visual learning, you know, you're seeing kids that learn visually can see how that methodology works. Good to see the math facts still in there too, you know, what are your working strategies or not? I, I tend to think of it in terms of math as we need kids to learn math, not memorize math. And I think, you know, from where I grew up, a lot of kids memorized math, but then they got at higher levels of algebra, calculus and things, they didn't know how to manipulate it and they struggled. And so having that piece and having some visual elements to that, I think are all good. I've, I'm pretty comfortable with what you were showing in materials, so.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, I think there's a number of positive elements, the strategies, the number concepts, the number sense, fluency, efficiency and all that. But uh, in evaluating any math curriculum, I'm going to answer Jane's question here now. First and most basic question I ask is, does it have a strong, strong math facts component? Sadly, the answer here is no. Um, and I appreciate your, your response to my question. We appreciate the question because students not being automatic on their math facts, and that's what's required, has been an issue for a long time since I taught in Waterloo. So I'm gonna refer back to history a little bit. Uh, used to be a guy named Larry Leisinger, I don't know if you've recognized that name from the past. But he was sort of the math guru of uh, I don't know if he worked for you and I or you and I. And he was strong on math facts and I guess I've subscribed to that to this day, especially when my wife at the time was teaching at Grant. And they did math facts and if I can remember correctly, I think they did a hundred problems in two minutes. So it's about one second. The reason you, three seconds doesn't work is because in three seconds, four plus three, I can do it on my fingers or I can do it on tally marks. That's not math facts. It has to be much quicker than that. It's one of those basic skills that everybody just, once you know it, you're gonna know it for life. And it's gonna serve you well for life. So that's my litmus test, as it always is on math curriculum. Let me give you a couple of other experiences. I coached math counts uh, uh, for a few years. Uh, you know what that program, okay. And uh, of course, those kids were, you know, above average, some cases much above average. But uh, they did not have three seconds. I was actually the state chairman for one year for math counts and those are competitions uh, supported by the Iowa Engineering Society. And uh, you'd be totally lost if you had three seconds. And what it speaks to is something I've also observed in tutoring kids, especially middle school kids. And that is, if you don't automatically or instantaneously know those facts, I've seen time and time again, the student on a story problem, for example, conceptually visualizes the route to go. And then it isn't so much the three seconds, but it's the deviation mentally that I have to go out and figure seven times eight. And then they lose the train of thought coming back. So I've seen that over and over again. So they have problems with, with uh, story problems or just keeping uh, the mental sequence in mind because they don't know it automatically. So that's my pitch and they have to have it automatically. And so, so three seconds is not automatic, that's a, that's how fast can you do fingers and tally marks? Uh, it's uh, it just needs to be, it's missing here. I guess I'm lobbying for it to be added, strongly lobbying for it to be added. Uh, just to underscore that, I'm gonna, I'm gonna vote against this because it does not have true math facts. And that's just fundamental. It's so important, seems like common sense, but no, we don't need to do that. Uh, there's, I don't know, and educational elitist somehow decided rope memory was no longer of value. Well, that may be in a lot of cases, but math facts is one where it is of value. And so uh, I'll compromise even to go to base ten instead of twelve on the math facts like, like, like we knew. But uh, I think it's a, it's a huge, huge uh, omission here. And uh, you know, and it affects the district. You've heard of the, you know, comments, you go to the store, buy something for ninety cents and give them a dollar and the clerk has to go to the calculator. You know, we don't want that reflection on Waterloo schools. They should instantaneously know, not three seconds, not twenty seconds, instantaneously. So that's what I think is uh, missing from this program. Otherwise, I think it's, it's, it's generally good. But if that's not added, you're gonna have kids struggling and not doing well through their, through their entire life. I mean, even go to the grocery store, you know, twelve, twelve ounces for a dollar or sixteen ounces for a dollar twenty. That should not be a three-second decision. That should be instantaneous. So there's all kinds of applications and it makes, you know, estimating, it makes life, makes math fun. If you really know it and you're good at it and you become good at it by knowing your math facts instantaneously.
Jen, do you want to say something?
I do, sorry.
Lyle, are you all right if somebody?
Is that okay?
Okay, no, I, I'm making sure that the question is-
I appreciate that comment too, Lyle. Um, I think, you know, looking at math curricular resources now, there are not any, to my knowledge, maybe there are some out there that will have a real stress on the math facts. We of course are going to do math facts with kids and we want that. And Bridges may say the three seconds. I also look with what you are saying too, we're going to be assessing that with kids and we do want that to be instantaneous. One second, three seconds. I would still say that it would be hard for a lot of kids to be able to do nine times eight, seventy-two by doing tallies in three seconds. You know, we're talking, I think semantics maybe more or less. Um, but I do feel like this particular resource and the other resources honestly that are out there, they're not going to stress that as the main goal, it's the number sense. Um, but that doesn't mean that we are not helping our kids become uh, more automatic. But with a real focus on those strategies, yes. But they still have to be able to know those fairly quickly. And by fairly quickly, I would say the one to three second range is a pretty good estimate, depending on what they're doing, multiplication and division. I would want them to know that within the three seconds. So just wanted to throw that in there.
Lyle, you could, just so I can check my thinking, so you're thinking that automatic is, give me a time. One, one, half second, one second?
Tenth of a second, yeah.
Tenth of a second, okay. And, and I, I, I get where you're, you know, that you see seven times eight, boom, okay. And you know, nine times four, thirty-six, okay, I get that. But I also think like when you're assessing kids, there is, there is a downshift that happens when they're doing, I mean, I see it all the time. They're doing a hundred facts or they're doing fifty facts or whatever, and they're trying to go as fast as they can. So I, I don't think the three seconds is we're wanting them to take three seconds. I think we're trying, we're wanting them to know those facts that they can come up, they're, they're not, I mean, as a former math teacher, I really don't think that they're gonna be able to do an array or a, or a tally marks or a, I just don't, you know. The only thing they might be able to do is if they're doing like nine times five, they might be able to go maybe in three seconds. But I'm not even sure that they can do that. So I, I, I totally get where you're going and I think less would be better if they could do it in one second. But a tenth of a second is, that's not even enough time to get your-
It's, well, it's-
The words out of your mouth.
The key here is the time test, number one, which isn't part of it as I understand it. The key is the time test. And I don't know, electronically, it's probably a different ballgame now, but basically as fast as you could write. It's as fast as you could write. You really didn't need to think about it, you saw the numbers, you knew the answer. And, and like I say, that's a lifelong skill. Anybody that doesn't have that is really uh, somewhat deficient, you know, even, even now in conversation, somebody saying, well, you know, we give a thousand shots a day for a hundred days, well, that's a million and our population is uh, you know, three hundred and thirty million. You have to be able to spot that error, just, just like that.
Are they currently working on that now? Are they currently doing that now? Is that, is that part of the-
We will, we always will address math facts, right? And it's, it's not that we're gonna say every week, every teacher needs to be doing a five-minute time test, you know? But it is still, it's still a piece of our data that we can see where kids are automatically getting it. And it's not, it's not something that they would write in here, but it would be something that we would continue that practice anyway.
And Ryan put a, um, you put an example, because I asked you this question. Uh, you put an example of a worksheet that was, it wasn't an exact time test, but it had the draft on it that came out of the numbers corner?
Yep, there's a number of opportunities for students to practice throughout. So it kind of spirals through where they have like that daily practice, but those, those are not time, they're just the daily practice piece. But the more exposures they get to them, the faster they get. So that, that is the positive about what, what's in number corner and the other areas.
Oh, buy every teacher a stopwatch.
Yeah. But Lyle, I would argue like what, or just not argue, but put aside that like Jesse said, um, are we just memorizing, which in, in turn with, with math it is. But I'm back in the days where I recall greatly the chart up on the wall at Kitterell School. And you know, if you were in the ninety percent, you got this star. There weren't very many kids that were in the ninety percent, you know, and then it went down and down and down. So by the end of the year, because the kids, but that was a big part of the curriculum. Like my kids took those time tests all the time. And I'm like, boy, aren't they doing something else than doing time tests? So I think it does have its value, but I don't know if it needs to be as large of a part of- So I think it does have its value, but I don't know if it needs to be as large of a part of the curriculum. Just, that's my opinion, but I'm just saying, I totally recall that. And I mean, myself, I did time tests, you know? So I mean, they've been around for a long time.
I would tell you the, the math time tests and the math, math facts, that is actually the easiest part to supplement out of everything. Having good, solid thinking curriculum that allows them to really, really hone in on best, that, I will take that any day over because honestly, you can find, the, the software programs where they can flip through math facts are free and easy to do. So I, personally, I, if the curriculum, if I hear this team saying the curriculum is really solid on teaching math concepts, I would, I was gonna say I'd do a cartwheel. I can't do a cartwheel, but I would be very happy about that because the math facts is easy. And I believe strongly that we will never give up on math facts. We're always gonna keep going. But what you won't do is you can't keep a kid from going on to something a little more complex because they cannot regurgitate their math facts. That has been disproved, you know, forever ago when there used to be, you cannot go on to anything until you have mastered all of them. Well, that's not really true. You can think critically in math. It, it helps if you know them and it's much quicker.
You can think critically, but it's, but it's a showstopper because the mental, the mental focus is distracted if you don't automatically know the numbers. And that's where those kids fall behind is because they have to deviate their thinking as I said, like I say, on the story problems, come back to it. Where, where, where was I? What was, what was the logic? And so, you know, and it's two minutes. It's, it's so easy to teach. And yes, it's rote memory and yes, it's probably the most valuable part of it because it complements all the rest of it. They never have to, again, in their entire life, stop and go through seven times eight, whatever number, you know, let me see that category.
Right.
Never have to do that again.
And I, and I think we have the same goal. I think we both wanna get to the same place. We're just looking at it, getting there in a different way.
So with, with the lack of math facts totally that there's been with investigations, I've seen that, like, I have a senior who's doing calculus, who doesn't know how to do, like, how to set up an algorithm. Like, I, I'm like, here, let's do forty-five divided by ninety-nine. I put it down and she's like, but she's, she's an A C in calculus, but she's slow. She, and so like, she did really poorly on her ACTs because of that. I was fast. I'm not great at math now. I was one of the kids that, I, I got that gold star when I was at Kitchell. I got the gold star. But, but I'm not, I, I'm probably one of the least proficient math people up here now. But I do understand what you're saying and I'm, I appreciate that there's math facts being put in it all now that, so kids look at it and, oh, that's what you mean, Mom, when you're talking about setting up a problem.
Can I just say one more thing in that?
Yep, now I'm gonna call the question.
Yep, you should.
Sorry, I'm gonna do it.
The, the one thing I would say is to make it equivalent to literacy or to give a parallel to literacy, we would never not teach the sight words because that automaticity of knowing those words, when kids have to decode and struggle for every word, it, the comprehension suffers. And that's the same conversation we had earlier with literacy. We have to teach basic sight words and that's why we, you know, the, almost in flashcards in that form, we do that all the way through just like the, the basic math facts would be important. So I'm actually really agreeing with you. I'm not sure about the three seconds, whether that's a taboo time or not, but I do think that that, you're, you're, you're exactly right and we, we believe that that's important too, so.
So to be doubly clear, we are not getting rid of math facts. That's why I told Brian, we are not getting rid of math facts.
But the, by definition, three seconds is not math facts to me.
Can I ask one more question, Ryan? So, so with the, the PDs, you, it's gonna be AEA that does them? Is that what you said? Or how's, how's it gonna work? Cause then you were saying that different grade levels, are they gonna be virtual? Is that what you meant?
So they'll be virtual, but they'll be led by our math coaches. And through the first year, we do get so many PDs from Bridges. So our math coaches will work with the Bridges folks to kind of see where we're going. And then I also want our math coaches to really dig into the curriculum at one grade level. So we're gonna have one math coach at each grade level so they can really get to know it. Right now, the math coaches are spread between multiple buildings, multiple grade levels, so they don't get to dig in deep. So this way, they can really dig in deep so that they can really provide quality PD to teachers in that moment. So the week before they're going to actually teach this, they're gonna get that PD that goes along with it.
So your coaches are gonna start doing this as soon as it, they're gonna start learning as soon as it comes in? Is that what I'm understanding?
Yeah, coaches, well, actually Bethany just brought part of it back and we have a couple other coaches that are already grabbing materials. They're already starting to dig through just to kind of see what's all there. So they can start to understand it as, as much as possible.
And then our teachers would start in the fall or will there be any PD before that or?
So they would start in the, in the summer. So that summer, the summer academy, we would offer PD for this also. And then at the beginning of the school year.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
You spoke, you spoke a little bit to the advancement or the students that are really advanced or the opportunities for them. And math is one of those areas, again, this is my experience in math counts, where some students, I mean, these were sixth and seventh grade students and they had high school math more than complete. So it's a, it's a subject that kind of builds, it's cumulative, it builds on itself. And at any age, if a student gets really interested and is provided the opportunity, they can go from here to way up here. And unfortunately, if they don't during that area of interest, I've seen them lose interest and they never get there. So I guess what opportunity does the curriculum have or do we have as, you know, acceleration policy to allow those kids that happen to be interested for two years before they get distracted in their adolescent years or other things? That they just totally excel and basically learn every, all they, almost all they need to know in, in a year or two.
I can speak to that just a little bit. I, I will say this is, really sounds like two different discussions. Acceleration is a different discussion than enrichment for students in a, in a Gen Ed classroom who need that. So one thing that I really like about Bridges is that intervention piece because it's a separate entity. It isn't just the curriculum going further, doing this. It's a separate piece. And so, for example, right now in my classroom, I have about four or five students. I can tell you I'm probably not meeting their needs every single day as well as I would like to because we do create all of our intervention pieces on our own. And so with Bridges, what we have is the opportunity to, as a third grade teacher, I can look at that fourth grade intervention material. I'm not pulling from the core because I would never teach them something that they're going to get in core the following year. But I can pull that intervention piece and supplement what they do in my classroom. So they're not sitting at a computer. They're still doing interactive things with their peers and they're still having that opportunity to be exposed to higher level thinking skills in math that we just don't have that opportunity on a consistent basis. Of course, we all do it, but it isn't, it isn't as consistent as we like. And so for those kiddos who really truly excel, we are able to identify those, they're a gifted and talented program or whatever that might be, they're identified in a separate way. And so that's a, that's a separate thing. But I can tell you for Gen Ed teachers, this is gonna be a real game changer in how far we can really push kids in math.
So you mentioned not teaching what's gonna be taught the next year, but does that preclude, you know, eighth grade students taking ninth grade math?
No, no, no. There's a, there's a school board policy that governs acceleration. And so we have, they can accelerate. There's an actual formal acceleration track that starts in sixth grade.
But if you don't teach, if, if you're not teaching what's, you can't skip a grade without learning what's in that grade.
So there is a, when they enter into that, there's a, a condensed track for entering in where they get like a two-year condensed program. There, that math is, that's very prescriptive. That there's a, there's like a, what I'm gonna call an on-ramp for acceleration. And that is, we've done that for, for years to make sure, and it's very, the sec, the scope and sequence is very mapped out to make sure that they are not missing that, that year. So there's a, there's a, there's curriculum materials to support that on-ramp, if that makes sense.
What is the cost per year on consumables? I'm sorry, that's the only, just consumables.
It's fine. No, India has been waiting very much for her follow-up question. I've been trying to get her to the floor.
I thought you were trying to close us. I'm sorry.
Nope. I'm gonna, you got, there's three questions. Keep going.
So the consumable, sorry.
Curriculum and not get into acceleration tonight. Thank you.
Okay, so the resources per student are seven fifty for the workbooks at this point. The thing that we're gonna look at though is there's a home component workbook, there's a student workbook that goes with the curriculum and then a number corners workbook. So we're gonna look to see, cause we also have access to all of those online. So we're gonna look to see if there's certain components that we only wanna do with the online or if we, we also can print them. Once we purchase this, we have access to all of that. So we're gonna look, maybe the homework, maybe we don't, maybe we don't wanna buy the workbook. That's actually the thickest one. Maybe we don't use every page of that and we print and we can save some money in that way.
That's great. Thank you.
I will just say that, you know, I was looking at the Bridges website and looking at their map. And I was slightly concerned that the schools that they have this curriculum in, at least in Iowa, are smaller schools. I know Dubuque is comparable to Waterloo, but a lot of them are like Christian schools or smaller schools. And so I think my only reservation is, how does this curriculum fit with our students? You know, the diversity that we have in our, in our district, I just wanna make sure, you know, it sounds great. I love the factors and I, you know, I even wrote the question like, you know, these factors that you put in this Google Doc, what are you not doing that already? So I feel like you're doing those things already, which is great. But how does this curriculum, which we know we have to choose a math curriculum and it's not gonna be anything correct, that's gonna be the perfect one? I got that. But I just wanna make sure that, looking at this map, that they're not, a lot of these schools are not as diverse as our district. So how does that relate strictly to these students who are first languagers or English is not their first language or, you know, who are struggling at home?
So council bluffs, I would say, would be closer to what we are. They're using it. And then I know once you leave the state of Iowa, some really large districts, I know like Denver Public Schools use it. As far as the ELL piece, there, there are components for ELL supports built within the program. So it gives teachers ideas of what they can do for students who have, who need ELL supports. The other thing that it has that we really like about it is unit eight for every, every grade level is a STEM unit. So it takes what they've learned for the entire year and then they actually apply it in a STEM, STEM unit. So like third grade, they, they build bridges and they take concepts that they learned throughout the year and they, they apply them.
Okay, thank you.
And I thought, one of the things that I thought when I looked at it was that visual piece of it would help with our English learners too. And I just see a lot of visual in there. You know, for kids that are more visual thinkers, they can go that route too, so.
Thank you.
All I was wondering as far as the data-driven stuff, when we were talking about, you know, the same programs, can we really specify and check a child that might be starting kindergarten next year through the fifth grade and, and obtain the data on how they do versus a child that started in third grade with having the other program and then now the, the curriculum? I just think it would be very interesting to see a student that had the full five years of this curriculum versus a student that had three years and then two years. There's, you know, just something, so data-wise, I think that would be very interesting to have that information.
No need to apologize. All great questions.
Thank you for your presentation.
Yeah, thank you all, both, all four of you for being here tonight. We really appreciate it.
Thank you.
All both of you, where's your math fact?
See, I can't do my math facts. I can't call.
She had time tests every day, Lyle.
I can't call on people in the right order. I'm losing control. So, okay, great. All right. So all those in favor, Lyle, I know where you're going with this. All those in favor of approving the elementary math curriculum adoption, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And all those opposed?
Aye, just to underscore my concerns.
Math facts and chair votes, chair votes aye, motion carried. You got that, Madam Secretary? All righty. All righty. Let's move on then to item aye, which is the 2021, 2022 school district calendars. This is item on page twenty-five. And the recommended motion here is the Board of Education approved the 2021, 2022 proposed school district calendars.
So move.
Thank you. In a second. Thank you, Aster. And you all have a copy of them right here at your desk. I don't know if there's any, these are the colored ones. I think the, the big thing to draw out here is the rolling start to the school year in India. I know you, you asked about that last meeting. But are there any questions for? Did you, did you say it's little? Oh, the print is little.
For the rolling start, I was wondering, when would new students to the district be included?
Um, my hunch is that they would be included on the day that is their grade level's coming. So there will probably be some, hopefully some type of a new student event. We usually do a new student orientation in the evening. So they would come to that, but they would come with their grade level. So if they're fourth grade new student, then they would start with the rest of their fourth grade class.
Is it possible to put the orientations, the new, new student orientations on the calendar as well?
Uh, we can do that. I don't actually have those dates yet and we don't usually put events on a, on the board-approved calendar, but they would go on the district calendar. So if that's, I'm not exactly sure. Usually we work during the summer to get those scheduled and get that communicated, but we can certainly get that decided.
And it will be updated on the district calendar?
It'll be on the district calendar online. Yeah, absolutely. And then that, that gets communicated through the buildings.
Yeah, cause I just like worry somewhat about maybe a fifth grader entering, you know, that they're new to the district and they're, you know, they don't know anything and then they're gonna come on the latest of the days, you know, and they don't even know the school or, you know? So I'm just, was wondering about that as far as an orientation for them, new students also. And then what about the Waterloo Career Center?
They will start, I believe they're gonna start on that first, well, they'll start with their, the juniors and seniors will start on the first day and then the sophomores will start af, or the juniors and seniors will start after. Did I say freshman, sophomore on the first day? So they'll start, they'll start with their, according to this, they'll start this, because they come from the Waterloo, they come from East and Western Expo. So they'll start with their, their classes.
So basically the WCC staff will not have very many students because not that many ninth graders are there on the first days and then?
Probably not on the very first day.
So are all the other surrounding schools starting the same day then?
Most schools, because it's legislated that schools cannot, they can start on the twenty-third or after. And what happens is that people will start, whenever the twenty-third falls, they'll usually start on the twenty-third or the soonest thereafter. So if the twenty-third starts on a, on a Saturday, then we usually start on Monday. What happens is sometimes the twenty-third falls on a Friday. So then districts have that difficult decision. Do you start on a Friday for one day and then, so, yeah.
And I was just asking because if you're like Waterloo's Christian and they're coming and they don't start till like, you know, that's why I was asking.
Okay, yeah, I would believe that. I bet you ninety-eight percent of school districts in Iowa will start on Monday, August twenty-third. That'd be my guess.
So kind of back to Mr. Williams' point about orientation. So, you know, during the spring, we usually kind of have a fifth grade orientation into their feeder school. And I don't know if that's been decided. So will, if we don't have that, will they just kind of hopefully get a new orientation in the fall?
Yeah, we will do something with orientation, even if it's the fifth grade teachers logging into the, the sixth grade teachers logging in or the principal doing something virtually. We will do something for orientation this spring. So we've talked about taking them on a virtual tour. We've talked about a variety of things. I'm still hoping that we can have them go to the buildings. So that's our, that's our first preference, but we shall see. We got a little bit of time between now and, that's usually middle of May. So we'll see what it's like then.
Waterloo College has had virtual walking, walk-in campus virtual and stuff like that, buildings and stuff. So we did a lot of that.
You kind of have a cool GoPro on your head.
Right, yeah, yeah. Could talk it through, put it on the principal's head.
Second grader though.
Does, when does our pre-K start?
I'm actually not sure when pre-K starts. I know that we tried to move it up a little bit, but I don't see that.
On the thirtieth.
So the thirtieth.
Oh, I was looking at the, yeah.
It's not, yeah, okay.
It's on the, it's on the elementary one. So look, yep, it's on there, the thirtieth.
Get your microscope, get your microscope.
Um, my other question is, so having them staggered like this, does this mess up our, how many hours a year that a kid has to have?
Nope, it doesn't. So nope, because that, that goes by the school and plus there's plenty of hours in here, the cushion. And we, you know, school, I think I, I mentioned that at a previous meeting, schools rarely ever schedule just one thousand eighty. That's the minimum. And so I, most people, because we, our teachers are contracted for a certain amount of days and so they're working that many days. And so by the time we do the calendar, there's usually, it exceeds. So in this one, I think we're twenty-four hours over. Am I correct on that? Something like that, twenty-four hours more. And that accounts for, if, if there's one snow day, then we make it up. Second snow day, we make it up. Third snow Second snow day, we make it up. Third snow day, well, I think we make those all up hourly at the end. But like, let's say that we have five late starts. Well, that's ten hours lost of instructional time. So, that, we build in that so we don't have to be short.
Um, my other question is, didn't, and this might have been a long time ago, 'cause I haven't had a kindergartner for a long time. Didn't kindergarten used to start later than the rest of it?
They did. They did. Yep, yep. We did. They did used to start that. And, and we changed that a while back based on, I know that the teachers sometimes would like to have them start later and I know that sometimes the, the one, the one thing I will say is that you sometimes see a kindergartner sleeping in the afternoon, 'cause they're just tired, you know, they're coming off of the summer. And so, it does take a little while for them to get that stamina, so.
And the hundred and seventy-two days of student instruction, that includes the, that counts those partial days?
Say that again?
That counts those roll-in days as full days?
Um, yeah.
I guess I'm trying to handle on, we have a hundred and seventy-two bus days.
Yes.
When we look at the bus contract.
Because the, the school needs to be in operation, but even if it, in order to count the day, the school needs to be in operation. But even if it weren't, we still have exceeded the ten eighty.
Yeah, the ten eighty, but I'm, I'm trying to hone in on, in our bus contracts, how many days we end up paying for.
Yep.
And right now, it looks like it's a hundred and seventy-two, uh, period.
Right.
Okay.
This may be an interesting note, especially for programming in the city, that, that Friday before spring break starts, it major, uh, may be a big thing for people. So, I just kinda note that PD day on Mar- March eleventh.
Yep.
That might change some things for a lot of people for our programming. But it's, it's a good thing.
Oh, you mean to have an extra day to do that?
Yes, correct.
Yep.
Yeah, yeah.
And now, I, when looking through here, is it seven PD days then, total, for the year? That's what I caught with the couple half-days.
There's, there's ten PD days, but some of them are at the beginning of the year where it might be a workday or a PD day. So, there's ten. If you look down in the lower right-hand corner, there are ten.
Right, but I saw, teacher workday is in the same as a PD day?
It, not exactly, but they count as a professional development day for the state's definition, so yes.
Yeah. But I was glad to see the Thanksgiving break, 'cause I know a lot of teachers really did like the Wednesday before Thanksgiving off. So, I was glad to see that back in there. And then, does it, it looks like there's two built-in snow days then?
There are. So, the, we, we discussed that in the committee that really looked at this. Do you wanna answer some of these? Okay, I'm gonna turn it over to her. They're asking about the snow days, how the snow days will work.
Um, snow days will work similarly to what they will be this year. Um, the committee really wanted to have at least a couple built-in snow days. That was, at the beginning of, of our meeting, I said, what are some things that, your pie in the sky that you really want to have? And then, there are some things that we have to be reasonable. We can't have three weeks for Christmas break or, you know, some things like that. What are some things? And they talked about having, um, those two built-in snow days would be, teachers just thought it was not only teacher-friendly, but also family-friendly. So, every time there's no school, they're not having to log on and figure, putting their kids on, you know, we will do that after the third day, but ju- just have two built-in snow days. Everyone on the committee was at consensus with, yes, this is what we should do for not only teachers, but more importantly, our families. And the Wednesday before Thanksgiving was the number one thing that we got feedback on, like, please keep that Wednesday before Thanksgiving.
Uh, can you expand on that a little bit? Because I know other districts don't, and maybe I don't know. Other districts do have snow days, but, you know, they're virtual since we've kinda now got into this virtual, so, you know. And so, it was kind of a eyebrow, eyebrow raised when we did have a snow day. Have we had a snow day? Maybe we just started late, but.
We've had two.
We just had like, yes, two.
Two snow days.
Yeah, but they were like, why did I not jump on virtual real quick? So, can you kinda expand on that a little bit?
And it's something we talked a lot about as a committee. And it was one of the things that the committee was actually on this, on the same page, not only from the teacher point, because we really wanted to hear from teachers, but we also wanted to talk about, what do parents think about this? I know a lot of people on the, on the committee were teachers, but what would our parents think? And I think Jane did a survey for our parents. We did a survey for our administrators. Um, we reached out and all of our, all of our staff got to weigh in on this committee, although there was about twenty-five people who were physically present. They also weighed in and gave their opinions on things. And the two snow days was a really, was a big one to stress parents less because although we may think as educators, well, it's easier if we can just, if we could just log on virtually and dual-school that way. That wasn't the consensus when it came to our families. And so, it may be different here than a neighboring small town where they just think, well, if you just, that's just easier. But for us, it just wasn't, for our families, that just wasn't the, the, the go-to.
I just had a question. By the way, Dr. Mohren, I love your hair.
Oh, thank you.
So, on August, it has the twenty-fifth and the thirtieth as start dates, but why is the twenty-third not considered like circled purple as a start date?
Now, here's one thing I have to admit, that I forgot my reading glasses. So, so if it's something specific like that, I can't even, that's the sad part.
It's the first day that the whole district is in operation, so that's like the, that everybody is in. So, you could technically had a, have a purple square on twenty-three, twenty-four, and twenty-five, 'cause they're all start dates, but it's the first day that everyone is in operation.
But as far as like our hours, it starts the twenty-third, right? Like number of days. Okay. Thank you.
And I was just gonna go back to, I think we have some great community partners that would help push this rolling start information out. And I think we could gather, I think Grow Cedar Valley would be willing to do, because their employers need to know.
Right.
When Cedar Falls is starting, when Waterloo Christian is starting, when the Catholic schools are starting, when Waterloo starts. I think we can, I think there's some ways to get this out in the community. I know Tara does a great job with that, so. Um, just on multiple sources, so I just wanna reiterate that.
And thank you, Shanley, for pointing that out. There are some entities that are actually just waiting for this to be approved today, for me to send out some emails to say, okay, here's when we're, here's our official calendar.
Good.
Now, back to the snow days though, then would that make us have an earlier out or those would just be days off if we don't use them?
It's a snow makeup day or no school.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
So, those two that are left on our calendar for this year, they're going?
Mm-hmm. They will be attending school, both, both of those days.
April fifth is one of them.
Yep, April fifth and May.
May twelfth, seventh?
I think seventh sounds.
Two's a pretty safe assumption that we'll consume those.
Yeah, I think we'll be, nah, see what happens.
So, we'll officially add on at the end. We're not gonna look at using virtual, um, if we go past our number of snow days.
We can still look at that. Oh, geez, that was loud. We can still look at maybe adding them to the end, um, 'cause we, we already have a plan or where we could maybe do that, but right now, we're just, we're just doing the, the two snow days.
And it, we, I'm sorry, we couldn't do it though, like during, on a snow day, because we wouldn't know if they have all their stuff. Is that kinda what?
Right. That's, this, the whole virtual is contingent on we have, us having notice ahead of time so that we can, and especially at the elementary where they're physically having to send their devices home that they don't usually have.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Clearly, we, uh, it's exciting to have the calendar ready and, you know, it's good to go. All right. Um, all those in favor then of approving the 2021-2022 School District Calendar, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye, motion carried.
And sorry, just the graduation dates are on there?
Uh-huh.
So, that is, I think, a good thing for, to have this early so parents will know for sure next year.
Yep. And maybe a good time to remind people, we are sticking with the graduation dates for this year as well, so.
We're not sure what they look like exactly, but they're that day.
Still planning on, we're still working with you and I. I'm waiting to get that menu done.
Awesome. All right. The next item on our agenda is Item J. This is on page twenty-eight. Um, and the recommended motion here is that the Board of Education approve the Central Middle School remodel and the Waterloo Career Center expansion project and publish a notice to bidders.
Somebody's.
Thank you, Jesse, and a second. Thank you, Sue. And with that, I'll, I'll turn it over to Dr. Lindeman to talk a little bit more about this. Obviously, we had our public hearing earlier tonight. And so, um, I wanna, I know we have Kate Payne here from Envision Architecture and I'll let Dr. Lindeman lay some groundwork and then open it up for the board if they have any more discussion on that. Sue?
Yeah, I'm just, sorry, didn't mean to cut you off. Um, so, I'm gonna go through just a teeny bit of history and then I will turn it over to Kate for any, um, questions and answers. So, I'm gonna do this as much for the board, but also for Andrew, who's here reporting. So, um, back in August, we, the, the Board commissioned a study to look at a central remodel. So, um, you did that by vote, by an affirmative vote back in August. And so, throughout the fall, we had teams of, of people, groups, uh, teams working on what that remodel could look like. And so, we met, you know, we met often. Um, every other week, we started meeting to look at that. And so, one of the, the things that the Facilities Committee and the Board had, had talked about was they wanted to know, as we look at the Central Middle School remodel, look at the timeline. Look at how long, could it be a live-in remodel, meaning that the kids stay there and they remo, they move kids over here and remodel this part? Or would they need to be out of the building completely? So, shortly into the discussion, it was determined that we knew that it could not be a live-in remodel. There's just too much infrastructure that needs to be re, um, revisited at Central Middle School. So, with that, um, the, the architects were asked to look at options for where we could house the students during that time. So, we talked about, we actually explored quite a few different options. We looked at, you know, could we rent a building somewhere else? Could we rent multiple buildings? Could we take the students and fit them into our existing middle school buildings? Could we, um, you know, what, could we bring in modulators and set up a little mini camp? You know, a little, little, um, school in the parking lot? So, and we costed out all of these options. We did kind of a, you know, what's best-case scenario, what's best instructionally? What's, you know, what's the cost of each of those? And so, in the end, one of the proposals that the Facilities Committee, and, and I'll, I'll open this up afterwards to Lyle and Jesse and India can talk about kinda what this, what their thinking was on this. But one of the things that we looked at is, um, we looked at what, what would it be like if, um, we had an additional space? Instead of having modulators, what if it was kind of a one-building space so that they could, the students could use this, this space during their one year that they are displaced out of Central Middle School? So, now, set that aside. Over, at a separate time, we have talked about the central, the Waterloo Career Center and its projected future. So, just to remind the public and Andrew, you know, we launched our two programs in, our first two programs in August of 2016. And we did that after the February thirteenth bond failed. And so, we knew that we weren't gonna be able to build a separate facility, so we made the decision at that time to start proceeding within the Central Middle School building on the north end. And we renamed it Waterloo Career Center. So, the following fall that we did, we launched three more programs and that's also when the, when the school board voted to remodel that end of the building. And so, you approved a seventeen million dollar renovation at that time in September. Then in August, we, of August of 2019, we launched that, that, the space and had a grand opening. We had the governor here. We had, uh, you know, a very wonderful opening. And so, that space has been there. But with, with that, we always knew that our goal was to bring thirty programs for the Waterloo Career Center. That's what was in the bond vote. That's what we advertised. That's what we were really looking to do. So, in the existing space on the north end, there really was only room for about eighteen programs. So, that's where we've capped out. That's what's running right now. But there is, that's, that's where the space ends. And so, we, at that time, if you look back through the, um, you know, the Board, when they talked about that in, in, really back to 2017, there was always a feeling, always a feeling that we might need to expand. And we had actually even acquired land. There's Miriam's Park. We had traded some, you know, as a municipality, we had traded some land to the city to gain a little bit more land to, um, create availability and opportunity to expand to the south. So, the, the, the Facilities Committee entertained what it would be like to build the expansion portion of the Waterloo Career Center for dual purpose, um, not only for housing additional programs down the road, but also what could that space be, that shell of a building, could it be used for the Waterloo, for the Central Middle School students in the interim while they are displaced? After looking at all of the cost of that, it was determined that that was the, that was the, the best prospect to build the, the Waterloo Career Center building, but it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be used until later. You know, tw- fall of 2023, it would be available for, um, the expansion or for, for launching new programs. And there were a couple reasons that I think that was, and I, I don't wanna steal their thunder. I certainly want them to, to weigh in on this. But if I could speak for the Facilities Committee, what we talked about is the feasibility or the, the, um, being fiscally responsible to our taxpayers in that bringing in modulators. We wanted to keep the Central Middle School students on the, you know, in their, in their space on their campus. Bringing in modulators had a quite large cost. Um, I believe when we looked at it, it was around three million dollars to run the, run, to bring them in, to rent them, to set them up, to pour pads for everything, to get everything ready to go and then to demolish them and get rid of them at the end. And so, that three million dollars was really what we'd call disposed, you know, disposable money, because you bring in modulators and then when you're done, the only per, the only thing that, the purpose that served was that, just for that one year. So, if we looked at that three million dollars, we thought, well, what, what would, what good would that be on if we put it toward a more permanent building? Take that three million dollars and put it into a more permanent building that we were always looking to build at some point in time, just not necessarily right now. Then, at the same time, the state also, um, the state also offered what they called the Career Academy Incentive Fund, which would fund up to a million dollars to an expansion building or a new, new standalone building. We applied for that one million dollar grant. We secured that one million dollar grant, which also went to the cost of this, this building. So, what you're gonna hear when, when Kate comes up to answer questions, what you're gonna hear is the proposal on the table is to move forward with putting out, um, blueprints for bids on a building that would, would build a Waterloo Career Center expansion that would house the Central Middle School kids. So, we would build that building and then while they're in the expansion building, which would be, that would be spaced right on campus, the buses could just deliver to the back instead of delivering to the front of the building. And that building would be built, the Central Middle School kids would move into that space in the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. And then, they would remodel all of the Central Middle School and then those students could move back in. And then, that building is built for future expansion. I don't know how I did explaining that. There's a lot there, but, um, that's, that's kind of what, that's what the proposal is going to be. So, Jesse, India, Lyle, what did I say right or what did I miss?
I think you hit, hit it right on the nail. I mean, it's, it's, you know, been a long way to get there, but it seems to be most fiscally responsive of not wasting money and putting it, investing into long-term. I also look at it in terms of, you know, there's still, for us in our district, there's some growth areas in that part of our school district for future residential potential out in that area. And having a middle school there that is not forty years since it's been remodeled and be able to attract, you know, potential families there is a good thing as well, along with the Career Center expansion, which is showing a lot of promise within the community and state. I think we have set out an ambition to do something there and I think our results are showing, so.
And I would add in terms of why Central is a priority over some of our other needs, uh, there's a couple issues. One is that, uh, you know, it was built during the energy crisis of the seventies. Natural gas was not available. So, it's our only building that historically did not have natural gas in. So, it's by far the most expensive per square foot to heat and cool. It's by far the most expensive per student to heat and cool. Uh, and in addition, uh, it happens to have lined ductwork. Cut down on the noise and there's, there's good reasons for that, but history has kind of shown that lined ductwork, you really need to overcool all summer long to avoid mold growing in those, in those ductworks. So, bottom line, it's a, it's a really, really expensive building to operate. And so, there'll be significant savings on the, there's energy savings, but the cost savings associated to the energy is, is even greater. So, that's, that's one of the reasons why, uh, we think it's appropriate to go ahead and remodel, remodel Central at this time.
I was just gonna say, the, what Kate and her team has put together as far as the blueprints is amazing. Um, it's been a long time coming for a lot of students and staff at the. amazing. Um, it's been a long time coming for a lot of students and staff at that building. Um, but what we've seen and what they put together, it's nice. It's very, very nice. So I appreciate their patience because it's been a long time and, uh, you know, they've been antsy and anxious, but it's gonna be all worth it, definitely.
And India, that was one of the things that I, I was so impressed with was the, the end result, yes, of having Central remodeled, which needed to happen, and a second phase of the Career Center. But, but the fact that our kiddos get to stay in the same spot, I think it's very disruptive. It can be anyway for families to be offsite or be somewhere else. I mean, you know, our great Lowell families have been super patient with us while we're building a new spot. So I also was very happy to know that those Central students, not only are they gonna get a new building, but they're gonna be on site there, which I think is together, right, which I think is great.
And I would add, in addition, in addition to the functional standpoint of having the new building and the transfer of the students and back, from a, a construction cost standpoint, we think it's, it's really beneficial to have those two bid together, uh, because there's some overlap in, in the bids. And it also provides an opportunity over, uh, for a contractor over two-year program to secure, uh, work. And, uh, and also to, right now, looking ahead, you know, you don't know what inflation's gonna do, but to lock in the price of both of those right now, uh, it seemed like the, the thing to do, so.
Now, will it displace all sixth, seventh, eighth graders? So the entire student body will be displaced?
Yeah. And Kate, do you want to answer that question about why they, the expansiveness of the remodel?
Sure. Um, so the, s- all of the grades will just be removed and put into the expansion building. We're calling it WCCX. That, that's our kind of nomenclature for talking about it. Um, square footage wise, there's a lot of kids in Central Middle School that had to move over. So they will all move. They'll all be together. Um, it'll be a different kind of learning environment somewhat. It, it, it won't be as quiet perhaps because we're gonna fill a high bay open space with a bunch of classrooms, you know, and, but it'll, they'll all be together. They'll all be in one big space. Um, and it fit actually pretty perfectly, uh, honestly, to get all of the classrooms needed for the five, the five, six, no, it's, sorry, for the middle school program into the Career Center expansion space. Does that answer your question?
And are you anticipating real competitive bids right now with the construction market and, you know, availability of supplies, workers, companies?
Um, we are. We've been working with contractors throughout this to kind of make sure that they're in the queue on this and watching what projects they get locally. Um, I'm confident that we'll have competitive bids from at least three local general contractors on it. There's been a lot of people calling me to make sure that it's still coming out on the schedule we've been promoting.
So are the dates set for bid?
Dates are set. Drawings leave our office on March 26th. Bids are due on April 22nd.
That's, I just asked when the bids were due.
And then what would the timeline of the project look like?
So the first part of the project is the construction of the WCC expansion building. And that work will start right away and will be complete by the, the su, end of the summer of 2022. And that's when the middle school kids will then move in. They'll be in there during the 22, this is very hard for me, the 22, 23, three school year. And then they move back into the middle school, which is renovated, fully renovated. And then there's a little bit of tweaking at the end to take out all of those classrooms that were in the expansion building so that the Career Center programs can then be implemented in that building.
Perfect.
This is 21.
Fall of 23. So that would be the implementation of the programs. Okay.
And in the meantime, as far as the, I mean, this, this bid tonight, we're talking about the Central Middle School, but it does take time to launch programs for the Waterloo Career Center. And so we are already starting to work on what those programs could be, what they would be. We had some conversations about that because since they're building that, you know, what I call the shell of the building to start with, there are certain things that we want to make sure that we build right. If, if it needs to be reinforced concrete because we're bringing diesel mechanics, then we need to do that now as they're building that. So it really has been two balls in the air at the same time for the last nine months because we're talking about that and this. And so, um, Jeff Frost, uh, Executive Director of Career and Technical Education, and I have been meeting a lot to talk about that. And we've been talking with the Grove Cedar Valley Chamber. We've been talking, um, with Hawkeye Community College and you and I to talk about the articulation of those courses. So we will be working on those programs and, and, you know, preparing to launch as soon as we can, um, with, with those as well.
Yeah. And, uh, uh, just to underscore, the design of the WCCX is primarily for the WCC programs, many of which we were limited in terms of the type of structure available in the existing building. So there's certain programs we couldn't, you know, automatic, you couldn't really start without a different structure of building. So the, that's the primary design of that building. Now, there has been some, I don't know, minor or sometimes moderate modifications. There'll be a few more classrooms in that building that are probably otherwise would have been, uh, you know, that were kind of a, a nice to have just because it's gonna be used a year for, for the Central students. So, so there's some minor, I'd say, adjustments, but, but first and foremost, it's designed for the ultimate long-term use as a Waterloo Career Center. And, uh, we'll, we'll have to make some temporary, um, modifications to house the middle school students.
As I said, our, our, some of our Career Center program may get up where you see some of our careers firsthand if we're, we work
Absolutely.
With our state of construction, plumbing, whatever, we'll, we'll have actively gone right on site, then they may be able to.
So how much co-mingling will, um, the middle schools have with the Career Center's students?
Uh, probably very little, to be honest. The way that it's designed, it's, they'll be completely in the WCCX expansion building. And that building includes all of the kind of support things like bathrooms and stuff. The only challenge will be when they have to come back for lunch because they will still have to use the gym and the kitchen and the commons and the, so, and even the office spaces will be in the WCCX. So it's really just food and gym
Okay.
Uh, that will be back in the, the existing middle school space, but it will be connected by a bridge. So that will become a kind of implementation thing that the district will have to decide. Man, I have a feeling weather will be a factor in that.
Well, yeah, right. If it's, if it's a really nice day, they can walk out the door at the WCCX and walk through the parking lot and come in. But if it's really cold, we may do, you know, and have some adult supervision. And so they may use the bridge to come through. And, and so we're, um, Ross Bauer, the head principal at Central, has been on the teams, both teams. And so he has been working diligently and he knows he's gonna have to flex a little bit with weather. Um, the kids are really resilient. And so I can see them scooting across. They get a little, yeah, especially, you know, if it's a day like today, they will love to walk outside and walk across there, so.
So one of the things that we did last week was we brought over the finish choices to the middle school kids and let them have the final say on what the carpet and color palette will be in the building. So, um, they, they made the final choice. They were given a choice between two different color palettes. And the kids got ownership of it and made the decision.
Tell me they were given the choice between two different acceptable colors.
We definitely edited what they saw.
I got to see them and I liked the two choices they got. So I, they were Jane-approved, if that means anything. I liked them, so.
But I think it's awesome because it will be the timeline. I, I really appreciate the timeline because it won't, one stu, you know, if you start sixth grade, you're not gonna be in the WCCX for your entire middle school. You'll be able to be, you know, that, it's not gonna displace students for their entire career at the middle school. And I think it's very admirable of the district because it's, with facilities to have three capital campaigns basically going on at the same time. I mean, that's kind of unheard of because we have Lowell and we have Central and we have WCC. And so I just think to juggle all these balls and to still keep it under, um, certain budget limitations and, and not affect kids too badly, um, I think that's very admirable. So I appreciate your firm's hard work too, Kate, so.
Um, I just have a few questions.
Sure.
So what is the current population at Central right now?
Around 500.
Okay. And so the projected population number after everything is?
We've been working with that 450 to 500 number throughout this whole process.
It'll stay, okay.
About the same.
We're not growing the footprint of Central Middle School in the end.
Okay. Um, is there still gonna be room, um, for like high school bands to gather before they go on the field at Memorial Stadium? Is there still a place for them?
Y- yes, but it will be different for sure. I mean, the plan is that a chunk of the WCCX building will take that north end of the parking lot.
Right.
So it'll be more of a drive to this, a driveway with a, I'm sorry, with a bridge to get to the stadium. But all of the parking lot to the south remains the same.
Yes.
And they'll have access to the north side of the
Yep.
WCCX building too. There's quite a bit of space there. It's not hard surface.
Old football field is up there?
Yeah.
That's also.
It's not hard surface.
Right next to where the fans, you know, the uniform tank is, but.
Yeah, it's grassland.
Um, are there gonna be changes made to the actual parking lots?
Well, the parking lot that is beyond that gate, you know, on the north, on the north side of the parking lot, uh, right behind the WCC space right now.
Yes, okay.
Um, that will change.
Um, so, but that's not gonna affect, um, the parking lot space needed for Memorial Stadium, people who come, correct?
No, no.
Okay.
They can't park there anyway now.
Right. For, that's my understanding is that for the most part, that's for ambulances and the band and other stuff.
Yeah. Um, so is construction gonna affect our ability to use Memorial at all?
No.
Okay. And then you kind of touched on this, just like what's gonna be available to the kids for PE and lunch and assemblies, but it's gonna be that.
They'll have to walk back to the existing middle school space. The kitchen will stay online the entire time. The commons space, the big open space
Yeah.
will stay online the entire time. And the gym and the pool will stay online the entire time.
So there's no changes being made to those areas?
Very little. There's some mechanical system changes to Lyle's point, but that work will be scheduled to happen during the summer.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
In the past, have we generally, um, built or remodeled schools at the same number that they started at? So she mentioned Central's right around 500 now. And we're building at the 450, 500 mark. So do we, do we generally in the past, have we generally in the past, past built or remodeled schools to go to the same number of students?
We've, we've increased the size of the smaller schools for the most part. Kingsley's probably the exception, but Lowell is a good example. That was one of the smaller schools. So the standard for elementaries is four sections of K1, 2, three sections of 3, 4, 5. We do have a couple of schools. One's designed, one's for expansion, in which to add one more section to each of those. So in the elementary school, that's the standard model, which is increase in size, but only because the older schools were considered to be less efficient because they had too few students.
They were less efficient because they hadn't?
Cause they had fewer students, yeah. A 350 school. I mean, esp- instead of a 450 school, you've got the same, uh, number of principals and, you know, a lot of the costs are the same. You're just adding one more section, one more teacher and one more classroom. All the other, all the other stuff stays the same. So that's, that's kind of the standard size we've migrated to, I'd say.
An average school of this.
Why isn't it bigger?
Why wouldn't, why wouldn't it be, yeah?
Right.
Yeah, I think, well, our, our three middle schools that we have, Carver was built for 500, Bunger is a 500 building, Central is a 500 building. And so those were, that, I think at that point in time, we were planning to build for the 500 because there's actually fewer than that, I believe. They're, you know, right now, when I said 500, right now, they're a lot less than that because they still have students on virtual, but, um, as far as kids who are attending, but they're still Central Middle School students. So they have not, they've been, 450 seemed like it would be, 450 to 500 is, is about where they have been and where they will be unless boundaries change.
Is Hoover intended to have the number that it has? Is that what it, is it built to have that many kids?
Um, Hoover, I believe is a 750 to 800 capacity building. Am I right on that? Eight?
You are.
Help me on that. Marty's not here. I think it was built for 800-ish.
I think it's like 750.
750 to, yeah, 750, 800 in there.
And where are we at?
I think they're right now, they're, well, this year, it's hard, but usually, just because of virtual, I think they're at 700 right now with kids attending. But, but I believe they have 860 on their roster.
So with building Central, there wouldn't be any look at maybe shifting any boundaries, right? Is that what you're saying?
And that, yep. And that's a, that's a board decision.
I mean, if we're, if we're, if it's, if it's, if it was built or if it is meant to house 700 and we're over 100, 150 over on a good day without COVID, if everybody's not virtual, everybody's in the building. I just think that's quite a large number of students in a building. And you have the opportunity, um, to possibly, and I know that's another conversation, but to possibly take some of those students. Um, just I, I just, it doesn't sit well that one building is, if I dare say, overpopulated. And, and we're putting 20-plus million into another building, how much more would it be? I heard the financial portion, how much money, much more money would it be to build a little bigger if, if you're already doing it?
So you're talking about adding structure to a building that you gotta fix your money. So you're talking about adding structure doesn't exist today, which wasn't in the scope of what we're looking at, so. And, you know, we had structure very, could, you know, we may add a lot more unknowns than we have what we have just internal remodel. So, but would it be worth it to not have an overcrowded building?
And like the parking at Hoover? I mean, everything, yeah.
I mean, I'm just, I'm just acting, I don't, I don't know.
I think it may be worthwhile to actually get a capacity on Hoover because we don't, we've expanded it several times. We've never really officially adjusted the capacity, but, but go through the normal, you know, number of classrooms and, you know, all this. I think that would be interesting or, or we, we should know that number, quite frankly.
Yeah, I actually think we have that. I think that's upstairs in my office. I don't, I just don't know it right off hand. It's, I think it's more than 750 now. I think originally that's where we, we were, um, I mean, when they were, at one time, they were, we've done some things to, to decrease their numbers. At one point in time, I believe they were at 910 or 920. So we've done things to decrease and take, you know, 60 to 75 kids out of, of Hoover. We've changed some, they had some district level programs that we moved to other middle schools. And so those aren't there anymore, um, district level. Um, so we have decreased it. And so they're around, I mean, they've stayed, right now, they've stayed stable around, you know, 850 to 870. Um, so that's, I mean, that's where they've been. But the question is, you know, 10 years from now, will they be, you know, I, at some point in time, as geographical boundaries and expansions happen within the community, the board has to make those hard decisions. At what point in time do you, do you commission the superintendent to lead a boundary study? It, and that's how it starts. The board says, you know, we want to do a boundary study and we want to look at that. And we've done that, you know, we have had those studies at various times. So, um, I can't actually remember. Pam would have to help me look up the dates of the last ele, we did do an elementary boundary change at one point in time. 2010 was the last big one. So, yeah.
And who did, who did that affect?
Yeah, who did that affect?
That was an elementary.
Kingsley, Kitchell, Lou Henry, Irving.
Irving, yeah. So four or five of the elementaries.
Kingsley, Lou Henry, Kitchell, Irving. Yeah. So the, the question, I'm glad we're having the conversation.
It was a small area that we moved.
Lou, cause Lou Henry shrank twice, so, since we were there.
Which that affected.
Right, but I think Esther does bring up a valid point, that, you know, if we're going to put money into this middle school, do we still wanna keep the disparity of the sizes of our middle schools? I mean, I think that's a very good point.
And it, and it goes to my original question when we were talking about the number, the four fifty to five hundred. Ten years from now, there could be development, you know, in the central area, that bring more students and families there. I mean, it's, you know.
The good thing about Central, in my mind, is that at least this project would not prohibit us from, there's still land there. So if, if on those places where we're remodeling, if we end up, not that we're ready to do it right this minute in this project, but if there is, you know, like you said, in a couple of years, we see some growth, and we've got a, we've got an extra hundred, then we, we add that section, because we do have land at Central, it's a fairly large.
We're not in a locked, locked footprint.
Right, we're not, yeah, landlocked, I guess is what I'm trying to say.
Yeah.
So.
And there are companies out there that will do very in-depth um projections. And so that could be an, also a direction that if, you know, should you direct me to do that, we can also secure a, a company to come in and really look at housing markets, look at expansions, and, and, and look at that as well.
We elected to stay with the existing footprint, that's the bottom line, and it's expandable in the future, but I guess I would argue that uh we really wouldn't know how much to expand it, if at all, right now. But that in two or three years, depending on how things go with the Career Center, and what the population shift is, and whether there's more houses built in the, in the central neighborhood or not, uh, we'll know more about what the expansion could be. The Central Systems, I believe, have some additional capacity, so.
At, at Hoover or at?
Central.
Central, the remodeled.
So you wouldn't be adding, you know, more utilities, we got the wells there, we got the geothermal there.
Yeah, well, there's speculation where growth is, I mean, if he was, we were sitting here, what, a year, year and a half ago, we were talking about, you know, potential community growth out by Orange. That's, that's now, that's dried up now, you know? If we had acted that, at that moment, based on what we'd thought then.
Yeah.
We might have done something different, but, you know.
But with redistricting, we can push the growth, with redistricting.
Yep.
Because we already know that we have a building that has a hundred, a hundred fifty more students, so we already know that. I don't know if that, I don't know if anybody thinks that that's gonna change. I, I just, I think right now, with some of the things going out there, you know, even at a state level, I wouldn't, I wouldn't vote for expanding that building more than what it is, I think some, there's so many things that play right now that could impact numbers and stuff like that, that, you know, uh, things may adjust itself without us having the input either, so.
But then I guess we wouldn't be able to do a boundary shift. I mean, we're just locking ourself in that we can't, cause we're at four hundred, four fifty at Central. So we're not gonna be able to do a boundary shift to send more kids to Central, or Bunker, cause they're all capacityed out, or.
Well, and they're, they're not real, the, the one thing about capacities, when you say that a building has, you know, if, if the building, I think Bunker is slated for, you know, four, four fifty to five hundred, but I can tell you, when I was the principal there in two thousand and five, we had five hundred to thirty students in two empty rooms. So when the capacity is there, the one thing I would tell you is, just because you say that it's a four fifty building, does not mean, we have other, we have elementaries that were built for four, make sure I talk, both ways. Um, there, we have elementaries that are built for four fifty, that's a, that's a number, but it's not a hard and fast number that's saying that you couldn't serve five hundred, or you couldn't serve five fifty. I mean, Hoover's a good example, if, if it was built for eight hundred, if that's the capacity, and we have eight seventy right now, we're serving them, like I said, Bunker was, I believe Bunker is a four fifty to five hundred capacity, and I know, when I was the principal there, I had five thirty, so.
I pulled those numbers up, and it's really, it depends on what kind of square foot number you apply per student, right? So it, it can vary.
And how we have it configured.
But we, right now, when we've been testing those buildings, Hoover is tests to about seven ninety to about eight hundred students is what its capacity is.
Yep.
And that's based on an average in Iowa of a hundred and fifty-six gross square feet per student.
There is, uh, I mean, I coached legally at Hoover, and we were in the hallway, and I know a lot of the other schools are able to provide, like, some, a STEM area for those kinds of things, and I mean, it is tight there, and I'm, I'm not saying, Jesse, that like that should be right now, but I, I don't know how a boundary study would hurt.
Well, I think we, I would, I would just like to ask us tonight to deal with the project that we have here, which I know we have to think about, I, I know they're connected, I'm not saying that, but we're not gonna unravel the Hoover thing tonight, is, is so. I, just in Kate's essence, while she's here, I'd love to make sure that the board has their questions answered about the Central piece, and then the seven of us, eight of us can go, you know, talk more about the boundaries and that sort of stuff as well, but I just wanna be.
So it's not really a central, like, rebuild, it's just kind of cosmetic stuff at Central, and then it's a big tw- sixty thousand square foot expansion at
Oh, I, I would say it's, I mean.
It's pretty extensive.
It's pretty extensive.
It's definitely not cosmetic, I mean, it's infrastructure, it's mechanical, it's all of that, but it is within the existing footprint, if that, the, the, the walls that exist. Does that make it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Those walls were designed as temporary, as movable walls.
Yeah.
The, the drywall ones?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Between the classrooms, the partitions between the classrooms.
I taught, or I was a, I was a parent in a BD room there, and there were holes all over the walls in that room.
Inside, I think will be.
Yeah, and those have issues with
Totally.
With the fire department because of, well, because they're not sealed at the top, I believe, is, is the issue, so, so the new building, those walls will be gone, and it will be a new, new.
Yeah, the entire, the entire education area, the academic areas, south of the Commons, will be fully gutted and remodeled.
Yep.
It, it will not look like it does today.
Everything from that on, yep.
The Commons and the gym will stay, and the auditorium and the music room that's there.
Yeah.
That piece, yes, but everything else, I think, is on your.
Everything south of the Commons is fully demolished and reconstructed.
Is, is there not gonna be any update on the kitchen then?
Not at this time, I have ceilings, probably, cause we will sprinkler the whole building.
Oh, gotcha, okay.
But architecturally, is there any way that you could make more classroom space from existing?
It would be hard.
Okay.
We'd have to add.
But when, when we talk capacity, to me, it's more the number of classrooms and the kids per class. And in this case, we are kinda adding capacity, because the upper rooms at Central are really not usable, they are and they aren't. But there's difficulty with those, but the new plan is gonna make them
Right.
Full, fully usable classrooms.
Yeah.
And I don't know that we've done anything with the lower.
We're not using the lower level at all in remodel, so there is additional space down there, but it's, you know.
There's space down there to expand it, if we, if we, if we chose to, so I think from a student standpoint, we might, there's more good space, but, but then you get to, and that's the issue with Hoover, I think their classroom size is larger. I think they got more kids per classroom on the average than the other middle schools, don't they? So that, you know, that's part of the calculation, when you calculate, what's the school capacity? How many kids you gonna put in a classroom?
And say hi to me and cut you off, or, I just, I, it's something important for me, that our central staff, our central families know that this is not a gloss over to them, that this is, we're truly trying to modernize that building and really bring it up, something, that's something they really have needed, so I didn't mean to cut you off, or just, uh, you know, is, I want those families and those, our staff there know that, you know, this is a sincere effort to bring that building up to the, where our buildings are at, so.
It was built in nineteen seventy. It was built in nineteen seventy-two, so we're nearing fifty years. And it really hasn't been, besides painting, a few places, we really haven't, so, you know, it's a very sound building that has really withstood pretty well for fifty years, but it's time.
It'll be a wholesale refresh, it'll.
And there is an interesting opportunity, I mean, we have looked at it, but I mean, in theory, you could build additional gym and remodel that gym and the classrooms or something too, or something sound, you know, that, that would, there's no ways you could do that too, instead of building more structure on it, you just build a.
Yeah. Right, and I think some of it's gonna depend on how the switch happens and the programming that comes into W, WCCX and all of that as well, so.
Well, and remember, this is a two-year project, so if the board decides that they would like to look at a boundary study and whatever, the, the contractors are there for the next two years, so we do have some time versus today, if that's something that the board, I mean, if you wanted.
It's kind of, but there's other things, there's the open and roll issue, that, I mean, there's, there's a whole lot of other things that could affect our capacity.
There are a lot of moving parts.
Yes.
You know.
The pandemic, the.
Diversity bills.
Yep. And I don't wanna like, like get people like worried, like, we're gonna change Hoover, I just, like, today, you know, but it's, it's never bad to look.
It's good to, you know.
I don't think any of the conversation is bad.
No.
But that's just my perspective.
And also to make sure that we are doing, as you said, Esther, we have to be thinking thirty thousand foot level for our whole district, not just for one school, or not just for one boundary area, and it's hard. I mean, one of the most difficult things, I think, for school boards to do is, we don't have crystal walls. So we don't know exactly, Jane, I, I appreciate your point about, you know, that sometimes this is above our pay grade, in terms of, we may need to look at, uh, you know, hiring a company that is better at determining population shifts and changes than just we are, although I think we're pretty darn good at it, and we've had, we've made some really awesome, I mean, look at all of our buildings that we've done work on since, in, since two thousand and eight, it's amazing.
Right, and I would agree with all that, but I guess I just don't wanna pigeonhole us in that we don't have options. So that's what I wanna do.
Good. And I would reiterate to Shanley that, just to remind people that this is not a bond vote that raises their taxpayer dollars, this is, this is funded through one cent money, so just to make sure, cause that would be something people would ask.
Yep, and I think also the, in terms of being fiscally responsible, building the two projects together over the two years really does make a lot of sense to take advantage of a competitive construction market right now.
Yep.
And, yep, exactly.
And then, now you had mentioned the students helped pick out, how much has Central staff been involved in the project?
A lot, that we've had a lot of meetings, we've met, we've had a subcommittee that we've gone through a whole process, and that would, I think, almost every teacher in the building.
Awesome, awesome, so they have some ownership in it too?
No, I was just gonna say, thank you, Kate, I appreciate your patience in answering all of our questions, and, all right.
So with that, um, all those in favor of approving the Central Middle School remodel and the WCC career expansion project, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye, motion carried. The next item on our agenda then are, the, is one, board policy change, this is the second reading for our inclement weather uh policy, and the recommended motion here is that the board approve the following policy, transportation in inclement weather.
So move.
Second.
Thanks, you guys, I think it was Jessie in India, so, and with that, are there any questions?
Uh, yeah, hey Tara, on this one, um, in the last paragraph, it says, you know how we had decided to set up the no- different notification systems? So there's no comma app between television and websites, and then, I don't know, do we use the Oxford comma? I mean, I do, it's just kinda how I roll, but, uh, so would we put one after radio then as well, or no?
So you think it should be reading television, comma, websites, comma, radio?
Right, cause we meant them as two separate things, correct?
No, actually, that's television websites.
Yeah.
We put the notifications on their websites, but
So you didn't.
We also, sometimes people looked for the scroll, so that would be distinct from television websites. So we can change it to say television, comma, media websites, comma, radio and social media outlets, if that would correct that, okay, perfect, we'll change that, good catch.
Can, and we, can we make that just a friendly amendment to this policy, or does it need to come, so it doesn't have to come back to us?
I think because it's just grammatical, it doesn't have to come back before you, yeah, since it's a minor edit.
So it will read, the new one will read, district's notification system, comma, television, comma, media websites, comma, radio and social media outlets, when school is canceled or temporarily deleted.
And no Oxford comma?
No, I will strike, oh no, I, I'm one who does not use the Oxford commas, and so I've been eliminating those from a lot of policies.
Thanks, Tara.
Sorry about that.
There's an arm wrestling there somewhere, because.
I, I usually use it.
You just shift your grammatical style.
Are you? In the minutes that we made a grammatical, okay, great, okay, good catch, Stacy. No, it's fine. All right, is there anything further then on the policy? All right, then all those in favor of approving policy seven oh, seven point two, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye, motion carried. The next item on our agenda then is item L, and this is on page thirty-two, and this is for information only, and I will turn it over to Michael Coughlin to walk us through the exhibits.
Can you hear me?
Yep, we got you.
I wanted to respond to the question on that invoice of the Iowa testing, what is in the detail list? It says third to eleventh ISAP, online testing.
Okay.
And if there, you need more detail than that, or clarification?
No, thank you, Michael.
That's great, Michael, thank you.
He said two and a half hours enough.
I answered the question, I'm gone.
Okay, did you hear the, did you hear the invoice explanation?
Yep, we, we got it, and then we decided that you were done with us, so you just dropped the mic.
On page thirty-two is the finance reports, and I'm not gonna go into a lot of detail, but I do want to just make a note uh here for board members that have a look through here and realize that um on page thirty-nine, the detail of the revenue.
Oh my gosh. I have no clue.
Well, I don't know why I'm having troubles here.
It's all right, we got you now.
Okay.
Talk fast.
I think my phone's a little low, so I'm gonna Okay, so on page thirty-nine, the revenues are for January and not for February. Look, as we're looking through there, but um I'm not gonna go into a lot of detail about the financial reports tonight, because I'm anticipating some um adjustments because of the ESAR two money coming through, that's going to strengthen the financial condition um once we get some direction from the DE on how to process um ESAR formation, and that should strengthen our unspent balance, even from the projections that you see on these reports, and our cash solvency ratio. I did want to just uh point your attention to the graphs, um, cause it does show that of the funds that we are uh in, uh very um consistent previous years, um, and I expect those to increase with the, over last year, with the ESAR money being processed when we get that direction. The one fund that probably is showing a little bit less is the management fund on page thirty-three. That was um intentional. We, that was dropping down a little bit, um because insurance costs were going up, and we are going to address that with the tax issue um in our next meeting, when we uh look at what the tax rate and the tax assets are going to be. But just as a preview, that um information looks very favorable to what we've been doing in the past couple of years, so uh we will get into details more. in the past couple of years. So we will get into details more of that with the presentation on the twenty-second. The sales tax thirty-three fund is up because that's the money that came in from the bond control. And that we're using on Lowell. And on PEPOL, it is also up just because we haven't been aggress, as aggressive on some of the projects as compared to prior years. So that is also information to double check with Marty as we get into this summer coming up and so on. But the reason I'm a little hesitant of going through a lot of DTL on here, other than just telling you everything looks like it's in very good shape and I expect it to get a get a little better. On the page thirty-nine. No, on page thirty-nine is the revenues and then page four. And the next couple of pages after that, you can see the difference between the current year and what we were spending or we received last year. So you can see some differences in that. And it's, it's really kind of a trusting trend comparison. Because when you think of last year, nineteen twenty, we had regular school through February. And then the rest of the year was pandemic affected. And this year, in twenty twenty-one, we started the year out with still pandemic effects. That made it a little different than comparing to last year during the normal year. But now we're getting to more of a regular in-school face-to-face, a little more stability with that. So it's almost like comparing opposite trends. But in that, right now, it appears like our budget numbers are stable. And then our ESER money as we process that, that's going to strengthen some of our balances by the end of the year. So I see us ending the twenty twenty-one school year with a stronger balance than nineteen twenty. And as we process through the fifteen million dollars of ESER money, that's going to help us stay in a positive position. And so right now, trends are showing that we should be in an increased unspent balance situation for the next three years after this year. But I will get into a lot, a lot more in detail next meeting when we have the explanation of the tax rate asking, the tasks, the tax rates and the maximum expenditure. So that's what happens just to give you a preview of the process that discuss that at the next meeting on the twenty-second. At the end of that, the board will approve a tax rate and a maximum budget number to publish the courier. And that will be in, it has to be in the courier over ten days and not more than twenty. So that will give us time for the April twelfth meeting to then meet again to give final approval for the tax rate and the tax asking and the maximum budget that we can spend. We're going to have a couple other issues with that. We're probably, well, not probably, we're going to have to amend our current budget just because of the ESER money that's been coming through. And we're going to have to approve the one percent, hundred and one percent guarantee budget. So that has to be a board approval before that can go into our tax calculation. So a little bit of a package deal on all of the tax information over the next couple of meetings. I just wanted to say I will be there for that and do it in person rather than this trying to do it over the phone. So expect to be back at board meeting.
Michael, Michael. Michael, are there some exhibits that we may want to, I know it's more work, but may want to do comparisons with and without ESER? Adding the ESER money kind of invalidates comparisons of the past. So there might be certain exhibits that we'd kind of like to look at
Okay.
without ESER.
For the finance committee, when you were looking at that revised unspent balance projection over the next years, that did have something separated out, but I can make that a little more extensive. So you're comparing non-ESER trends with the previous years, that's what you're looking for, correct?
Yes.
Color code the ESER dollars.
Color code the ESER dollars.
Yes.
Well, I want to try and keep that under two hours, so.
We appreciate that.
Yeah, I can do that because it is hard to try and separate those out and know how it's really affecting us. So. But it is good news and it is keeping us stronger. But giving you some exhibits on that will help you clarify that a little bit.
Doesn't have to be huge detail.
Can you hear that?
Um, that, that.
Sue said it doesn't have to be huge detail.
Yeah, but that's never the situation. But I, yeah, we'll, I'll put some things together and maybe run that by finance committee people and see if this, because we don't meet again until after.
Right. We meet the twenty-third then, I think.
So I'll, I'll prepare some things and have the finance committee look at it to make sure we're doing, we're going in the direction that you're interested in.
Perfect. Great.
Just real quick, I was gonna say, can you just tell the public, someone did ask me the reason why, what and why the ESER dollars? Why does a school district get it? Could you just kind of briefly just say that out loud? The what and why?
The what and why we, we received the ESER money?
Yes.
The, the why is that it was a passage of legislation by Congress before the new president came in. It was one of the last acts for recovery from the pandemic. And it was divided out to the states and then within the, the school districts within states. And it was divided out by each district's Title One need. So because we because we have a, we have high concentration of Title One programs. I think we were the, we were in the top five or six districts in Iowa that got the most money. And that was the same with ESER One as well. We received more money in that. That revenue stream from the, from Congress, that was also a federal issue. So it was just recovery from the COVID nineteen pandemic. And we got a, a bigger share of many districts than many districts did just because of our Title One allocation. There is an ESER Three that's on the horizon with President Biden's Recovery Act. And it hasn't been decided yet, but it still seems to be on a track. So there may be additional and we're not sure how that is going to be divided out. There's also money from the Iowa Legislature after the FSA that they set aside a little less than thirty million dollars to give out to schools to help with this recovery effort as well. And that hasn't been decided yet either. So there are some, there are some additional funding streams that are going to be added to. I think some of it's even this year's budget, twenty twenty-one from the state. And the federal, it just depends on the timing of when they get it approved. And it usually, we usually have two to, two to two and a half to three years to spend the federal money. So it's going to last for a little bit for programs to be sustained, to be designed and sustained over two or three years just to help the achievement gap be addressed and recover from the missed instruction because of all the things that we've gone through. So. But I, I will separate out that money in some exhibits and we can touch base on that too. So you can see what normal normal trends would have been. And then we can over, overlap the ESER money on top of that. So you can see kind of where we're going.
Michael, we just approved the, the construction project. Do you have any indications so far on how the one percent money's coming? Whether the collections are above or below expectations?
The one percent money through this year so far has, has remained very stable. Iowa is not, I mean, they, the investors or like Piper that we deal with, they describe Iowa as it doesn't change fast going up and it doesn't change fast going down. It's a stable economy because of our diversity and agriculture and manufacturing and so forth. So we're not expecting to see much of a change in the projections for the save money.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
So we'll look forward to some color-coded images in, on the twenty-second.
Yep.
You're gonna get more color here.
All right. Thank you, Michael. I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
All right. The next item on our agenda then is the human resources update. This is on page forty-four and you all have an exhibit at your desk as well. And I would ask Kingsley Batsway to come forward.
Should have been.
You need one?
Oh, I forgot. Sorry about that.
It's okay, Kingsley.
So you see it in front of you. The biggest update obviously is the vaccine update. They may look like a lot of numbers, but my, there's a lot of work that went into trying to get through our staff, getting vaccinated appropriately. You know, I think Lyle has asked a couple of times for the data in regards to the prior numbers. And so this is the data as far as our current vaccination response that speaks to, we currently have one thousand two hundred and twenty people that have gotten the first dose. You'll see another number there that says, no, don't want the vaccine or got vaccinated out of district. That's tough to extrapolate because there are some people there that got a dose as well. Some said, no, I'm, I'm good. Other people said they've already gotten vaccinated. And so I can't give you a good number until we look at some more of the information. The biggest number is eighty-seven percent of those wanting the vaccine have gotten their first dose. So we're excited about that number. And we have an additional one hundred and sixty-nine that we're going to try to get vaccinated this week, which you'll see some information there about. And then after this week, prior to spring break, we're gonna stop with the vaccination process. We're gonna focus just on the second doses for vaccination. And then we're gonna provide other options that staff may be able to go through. So Unity Point can then shift its operation to, you know, one C and, and further along. And then you see the follow-up dates that we plan on our staff have for their second dose. So hopefully by April, we would have vaccinated everybody that wants a vaccine. Any questions?
So it says you're planning completing all first dose vaccinations this week. When you do second ones, I, I don't know if I heard right. Are you gonna not be at the same site where the first ones were?
That might, it, we hope it's gonna be the same site. If they, if it changes, we'll let people know.
Okay.
We have, we have literally paper lists of everyone that got the vaccine. Unity Point shared that information with us on a daily basis. So we have it. We just gotta throw it into an Excel spreadsheet. So it's a little bit easier for us, but we have all the information.
It was set up really nicely.
Yeah, they, they really did a good job and made sure they accommodated people appropriately too.
I was just gonna ask, and Dr. Lindman, you can chime in here about, we're still looking good as far as COVID cases and people quarantined, things of that nature, number going down.
Yeah, we are. And Kingsley can add if he has anything for the staff, but for the students, it, it's extremely low. We are going days and days and days between having even one case. So I believe there was one today. There was not anything from, I believe I shared last week from February twenty-fourth through I don't even know what the date was, was last week on the, the data my review, but we hadn't had anybody. So it's really, really low. I believe as of this morning, we had a total of seventy-nine kids out on quarantine and positives with the vast majority of them being out just on quarantine, not positive. So I think there might be just a handful out. Do you know?
Seventy-three.
Okay, seventy-three. We want to get credit for that. Thank you. Yeah, it's really, really low. Just in comparison, if you go back to November, I believe we were running between six hundred, six hundred and fifty out total. So I mean, this is really, really low. At one time, we had really hundreds out. That's when we, we shut down and we used that couple of days around Thanksgiving to just kind of give the clear. So this is really, really low.
The overall positivity rate's like four percent.
Four percent. It's four point today. Yeah.
Four point.
It was three point eight for a little while and then it's four point, it was four point one yesterday and now it's down to four points. So it's right in there. So not varying very much.
Sure.
All right. WA negotiations is kind of self-explanatory. It just means that, you know, you approved the negotiations team today and we will start negotiations, my hope is after spring break. I'd wanted a meeting prior to spring break. But they needed to meet. And I think there's obviously some calendar issues with people leaving and things along those lines. And so we're ready to proceed at, at any time. And then lastly, just wanting to, you know, continue to just share with the board of information, obviously the public as well, just different initiatives that our department's working on in relation to equity. This was something we really got excited about because ISB had shared information about all the districts in the state and their teachers of color or the number of staff of, of color that we had and we were, I, I've known this for some time, but it was good to have that information validated that we are the top in the state in regards to that. And a lot of credit has to go to my predecessor, Dr. Smith. I mean, she had us at seven point, I think, one, two percent back in two thousand and ten. And so, you know, my only credit is my team and being able to study that because now we're at six point eight eight percent. So we haven't lost as much as other districts. We've been able to replenish and recruit our staff of color and talent from that perspective. There's a lot more work to do and there's a lot more work yet that I hope that our number will go up even this year. But that's just a credit to our team. We participated in four recruitment fairs from HBCU's Hispanic serving institutions. We are completing our pilot year of infusing equity into the teacher evaluation process. And we restarted our meetings. Myself and Dr. Morehorn lead those meetings with staff of color in the district to discuss what we can do differently as a district. You know, it's just important. And as you hear from things in our neighboring districts and obviously across the state, one of the things that I want to give our team credit for, when I say our team, I mean, Dr. Lindemann, myself and Dr. Morehorn. Equity's always been a focus. I mean, we talk about it constantly. It's always a part of what we do. And so you know, if any questions or comments or things or concerns you hear from the community, we welcome those things because we literally, we're talking now about making sure that we have a documented fact sheet because I don't think we do a good job of getting that information out to the public about all those things. And we just don't want anybody to feel like we're not doing what we're supposed to be doing.
So when you say teacher of color, is, is, does that include all minority, like Asians, Indian?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep. All staff of color. All staff of color.
Thank you. My bladder thanks you.
I just had one question.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought, nobody was asking anything, okay.
Do we have anything on, any vision on retirements yet? I know we just saw one come in today, but just kind of wondering if that's, you know, anything you have a guess on?
No, because I saw two, one come in today and then another one last week. It's just slowly trickling in. I think people are starting to ask questions about it, but, yeah, people aren't making determinations. I don't, I'm not sure what's going on as far as that's concerned. I think it's just the uncertainty of a lot of things going on and things that have changed or people's, you know, either investments or savings lost due to COVID potentially affecting our population. But I can get back to you on the next report next month on our retirements. Because we'll have more information by then.
Thank you.
What's our contract deadline?
We don't necessarily have a contract deadline yet. So, you know, one of those things, we haven't sent it out because we haven't negotiated yet. We are ready for the handbook, I have to send that to Jane as far as some of the changes that we have in regards to that. We're, our team is well ahead of the game as far as everything we need. We just gotta get to the table and start negotiating right away to get that information.
So when you said that you restarted your meetings with staff of color to discuss what the district can do to be more inclusive, who, who's involved in, in that?
Myself and Dr. Morhorn. We lead, we lead those meetings. And we initially started it in response to the protests around the murder of George Floyd. And then, just with the schedule and everything, honestly, we just, we just didn't schedule anything. And then, just with some of the conversations about equity and some of the conversations at the Equity Committee, it was important for us to restart those. And it's, it's been a, again, it's been a breath of fresh air. I mean, I think a lot of it over the summer was more about airing space and hearing from our staff about concerns they'd have. And so we gathered that information and also talked to them about what we were doing. I think we shared that board update to you in June, and it was sharing that information just so they knew what we were doing. But then, now we're more looking at, okay, how do we just make sure that we're the most inclusive district? That everybody wants to come here because of all amazing things that we're doing. And so they've shared ideas, a survey will go out to ask them to give more ideas. I'll share that with Dr. Lindeman and Dr., or Dr. Morhorn will be there. But I'll share that with Dr. Lindeman as far as what other things can we do? That was something that Dr. Lindeman let me know, I believe in November, when we were talking about the focus groups. Kingsley, what can we do to make our district the best district? With all the changes that are happening with COVID and everything else, that needs to be a priority. And so that's why you saw with the focus groups, it moved from benefits, leaves, and compensation to employee well-being. Because we wanted people to have a dedicated focus that, you know, we care about you, but we wanted to make sure it showed in the, the work that we were doing, the name and everything else, and also with the follow-through.
So when you say the meetings, and it's just you two, but you're going, you're using the information that you got from the surveys? Is that what you're saying?
No, we got, we literally get on the call with like hundreds of staff.
Oh, you just said you and Stephanie, so I didn't know.
They lead it, they lead it. They lead like a medium.
No, I understand, I, I was just asking who then, they're. Right, all.
All of them, yeah, literally.
Invited.
Yeah, invited, and so they come online and then they, they just create a space or.
Right.
Yeah, basically we created a space, and then the survey, I may have not articulated it well. The survey actually hasn't been sent out yet. So we, we sat on the phone and we asked, or sat on Zoom and asked them, hey, what ideas do you have? People got on, but we also want to make sure that people may not feel comfortable sharing in that type of atmosphere. And so we wanted to send another way of like, hey, this is another way you can share information.
Okay, thank you, that's great, Kingsley, thank you.
And just wondering, is your plan, I know last year it was very much appreciated that you got the contracts out early. Is that kind of the plan again this year?
It's not the plan again in a sense this year, because we had gotten, we ended negotiations prior to spring break and gotten contracts out right after spring break. We hadn't started negotiations yet. So we're, we've gotten literally everything we can except that part. And we can't send out contracts. I actually had thought about sending out contracts without the number on there, but it wasn't, it wasn't a good plan. And so we're not going to, we're not going to do that. But we're gonna work diligently to have the same success that we have with WSB. I mean, we ended that within a day. And so our plan is to, I think I've, maybe quoting Lyle, you know, we want to put our best foot forward initially and go from there. So we care about our staff, so we're gonna go through it from that standpoint.
But probably not as late as it had previously been?
Yeah, no, 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 that's, yeah, yeah, it'd be in the middle, we're hoping for middle of April.
Okay, now you can go. I don't know, are we done? Thank you, Kingsley. All right.
Dismissed.
Thank you, dismissed, that's not what I meant. I just, you know me, I can't sit still for this long. All right, so let's move on to the superintendent's report.
You know, everything that I was going to say really I've talked about, so I will just let people, no, I really don't, I mean, I honestly don't have. So the only thing I will share is that we are working so hard on getting the final touches on so many different events. For example, prom is one, that's probably the number one question that we're getting asked right now. Tira had shared with me, she's constantly getting questions, and I get that, I mean, people want to know. And so, you know, we are, we are hoping, I was actually hoping we would have something ready on Friday, but we're really working with some venue issues and capacity issues. And, and so, I mean, it just, it is, it just doesn't fall in, in as quickly. If I could just make the decision, I would just do it myself and we'd do it today. But that just isn't, that isn't, you know, the way that we're doing this. So we will be having a prom, it will be face-to-face prom. It will not be a virtual prom where we're dancing over, it will be a face-to-face prom. But there will be some limitations, you know, on, on the number of students. And, and I've, you've seen some of that come out from other, other districts as well. And so we will be announcing that very, very soon. So if you are a senior person for sure, if you are a senior student, you can definitely plan on prom. I can tell you that right now. So we're, you know, we will be announcing some of the specifics of that. But that's really the only thing I would, I would share with you, except for check our Facebook page and check social media. We're putting a lot of really great information and content out, and it'd be good for you to check it out.
And information about graduation will be forthcoming as well. Board comments.
I have nothing. I, I'm, I'm good.
Just appreciating that everybody who, over the time, has been involved with this Central Mill School and Career Center update, it's been a long process and a lot of work, a lot of hours dedicated by people to make sure we're making the right decisions. So my appreciation to all of us involved with that.
And I just wanted to also again appreciate the Expo staff and the Expo students because that's just, that's just a warm place in my heart. And it's just awesome that these students, because as Stacy said too, there's been stigmas around Expo ever since, you know, and I've heard of kids gone there, a friend of mine's daughter really thrived, you know? And I just, I credit the staff for creating that environment and the students for coming on board. Because that is, you know, these are gonna be leaders in our world coming up. And at some point, they were told that they'd be a nobody, you know? I mean, and I, I just really appreciate the work that has gone in at Expo and Leader and me and, and the seven habits that those kids have really, and staff really, really know that that will make you successful.
Thanks, Sue, well done. Always.
Stacy.
I wanted to give a big kudos to both Shane and Eris for coming here and speaking. Like, I find it, when I was, when I've come to speak to the board before I was in the board, it's intimidating. And they were both so composed and did such a beautiful job. So if you guys are listening to this tomorrow, you did a wonderful job, and thank you. And then, oh, the only other thing is, I did want to just say that with what Eris was saying with the dress code, is something that I've really been mauling in my head a lot, is that it does tend to be focused more on girls. That their clothing is considered inappropriate a lot more often than the males are. And I don't feel that it's a female's responsibility to keep a male from thinking certain things about her, you know? So I was very happy to hear her say that. Is that something that we do talk about a lot in our house?
Wow.
I just want to piggyback a little bit on what Sue said. I think the Expo Award was well-deserved. And it's not just a cosmetic award with a great grant writer. I think the characteristics I recognize there are deeply seated and systemic in, in the school. And that's, that's really, really promising.
Very exciting. And I don't have anything tonight except to say thank you to the board for letting me step all over you and try to get you in line. And not in line, I don't mean in, in this line, I mean like let people talk and everything. I think I'm out of practice running a meeting and being in person, so I appreciate your grace. And we will be back here on March twenty-second. We've got some really exciting tax rates and all kinds of other things to discuss that evening, so.
Color-coded charts.
So come prepared. And with that, if there's being no further business to come before the board, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Thank you, Astor, in a second. And all those in favor, please sign the line by saying aye. Aye, we are adjourned, good night, be well.